And to do ladies.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First on our very full agenda today is the consent agenda. Any motion?
Mister Chairman, I move that we refer the consent agenda as listed.
Second. Moving seconded, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, has Tony happened to be out here? He's early. Yeah, saw that one.
Back here.
Well, we'll just wait until Mister Rutherford shows up and the sheriff is right behind him.
Mister Chairman, is that letter? That letter of support for?
Yes.
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 Awesome.
Is that good?
It's just that I'm funding for level three for some four billion houses. Page eleven. Did you sign a resolution for that?
For what?
For the why we were trying to.
We have a resolution. I haven't signed to approve us. Blackings. Yeah. Yes.
You got the price table for the. Part of their insurance. Right now. So we actually don't pay.
Well.
But they were adamant that we had paid before if we went through all of our records. We've never done that.
It's always been equivalent.
Yeah.
Go back to some.
Yeah, so plays or something.
Yeah. From Bernie. And go. Other than I think that today it's trade trade jobs day and I'm gonna go down to Matty Kenny Bedhold. You can sit right here.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Wow. I'm thinking because he's so willing that. That might be a great day lined up. How are you, how do you feel about subdivisions and egg land?
Uh, you know, it wouldn't bother me as much as fighting factories for vehicles and strains. You know. And fighting complaints because parts are on back order, vehicles are broke down.
Oh, yeah.
But I, but other than that, it's pretty sweet. So I don't wanna go too far so you can still change. Well, you got that chairman deal, Liz.
Yeah, I got it. I'm looking for an EGR. Bow or something for a truck I got. Come on, just say. Tell you when it's here, but.
Yeah, everything's all in back order.
Yeah.
It's really, really difficult to schedule work to get people done in a timely manner. You know. Well, I hope we learn a lesson from all this.
Please make a spares of waste red书.
I know.
I know where I was going there. We would never do that. Tony not out there?
No, and I tried to call his office. It goes to his account.
Well, I mean, we can move forward with it. We've seen the letter. Next up on the agenda is to approve and sign a letter of support. On law and water development council level three construction and funding application. What we got going on there?
What normally happens with special districts or special water districts like that is if you wanna do a construction project and you want grant and loan funds, the law and water development commission controls most of where that comes from. So you have to do an application for grant and loan combination funds in order to do construction for upgrades. Which is what I would.
And this, well, we've done this before.
Yep.
We've done several times before and so. I, you've seen the letter. I'm good with it, but I didn't hand a motion.
Mister Chairman, I note that we have heard the letter request for. Do you have VC level three construction funding for Northwest River?
Okay.
Moving seconded, further discussion.
I have a question. Where's the, the construction project?
It says power service area.
They've expanded. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to. By number of supports to this, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good saying here before. Well, you know, you have to find appear.
The letter appeared before.
The letter.
Put all the names.
Would they still have practices like that?
Well, that was school districts thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they let on because it's mostly, it's mostly conditioned at this time.
I was actually running play yesterday.
Well, they don't.
A lot of them are extending from. Yeah, that was.
So you don't turn off your phone, the penalty is. Hey, what's your number? I think I gotta have ringing. We're gonna have beer.
Speaking of which. They want my beer.
Seems like we're gonna have plenty there. Lloyd, which class of, how did you graduate? I thought you graduated with me, but you're a little younger. You're a class of.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, okay. I was eighty-one.
I.
I was eighty-one, so.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, last week, the name came up. We were digging past your folks' original place, Cleveland that ditch, and there's a dog leg.
Oh, okay.
In that ditch. The current guy runs it, you know, that controls the ditch. Didn't understand why, and I said, hell, it. Miller's old place, hell, why that dog legged over there for a horse water, you know, because it runs down the outside of that fence line and then it goes from me, you live inside, which, you know, comes back out. There's no reason. Straight, I ended up straight.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't either. No, mom and dad didn't.
No, I don't know why that ditch made a big U curve in it right there.
Not sure. Abby Donaldson was usually driving through there all the time checking it.
And then, yeah, it could've made clear back to. A right hold.
Yeah, yeah.
We were just discussing when that was and then, because that was the first place you guys lived out, wasn't it? The shiny mountain back behind the school?
Uh, they lived back behind the school. My folks did.
And then moved around. By my place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just a youngster. I clerk, clerk wasn't a place for me to have that much fun. Where I started.
Come on in.
Hey boss, sorry.
Next up, we have Park County Sheriff Scott Stewart to open. It's Park County Sheriff's. Morning.
Morning. Thank you. Looks like we got four. Two, three, one, two, three, four. Daniel. Yeah, so try, I was gonna try to get another one.
They're all marked here.
Okay. I think I marked one horse, thirty-five hundred or something. I can remember. All, uh, all unboxed here. Okay, so I'll start with. I would agree, I'm sorry, four. Move forward, fifteen hundreds, that would be for a patrol vehicle. So this from Danny Menhols. Says the bid price is gonna be one thirty-four, three sixty. Trade ends at fifty-eight thousand. Move bid after trade ends to be seventy-six. Three sixty. Cheers to. Yeah, seventy-six, three sixty. And that is a three year, six, thirty-six thousand bumper, bumper, five year, hundred thousand.
Those are the Chevys.
Chevy, it's a twenty-two, or two thousand twenty-two Chevy Silverado, fifteen hundred crew cab, four by four pickups. And. Four. So. Okay, so. These are for. Thousand twenty-two Ford F-150. Looks like the final. After the trade is one twenty-five sixty-eight.
One hundred and twenty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars.
One hundred, yeah, one hundred and twenty thousand five sixty-eight.
Oh, five sixty-eight. That's after, that's Fremont map trade?
Yes, what it says is, uh, for the four trucks would be one seventy-seven, two-two-four, plus the tires we requested. And then minus sixty-one, five hundred for the trades equals one twenty-five sixty-eight.
Got you.
So it is also listed as four Dodge Rams. That would be thirty-three thousand two fifty-five plus the. Tires. Trade ends of sixty-one, five hundred for total of seventy-one, five twenty.
Seventy-one, five twenty.
Correct.
For four, four Dodge Rams.
Correct.
Yeah.
Great, so that's it for the, that one. Going to the home security vehicle, two thousand twenty-two Chevy Silverado, and, I'm sorry, heavy duty, thirty-five hundred crew cab, long box. For a price, and this one we didn't have any trade on for a price of four, forty-four thousand, seven forty-two. Uh, Danny Menhols.
That's.
And that is for that. So from. Fremont Cody. We have a. Two thousand twenty-two Ford three fifty. You know, trade fifty-six thousand, one thirteen. And for the second did they have for two thousand twenty-two Dodge Ram for a hundred. Fifty-six thousand seventy-seven dollars. I do believe that whatever the lowest one of these will vote in, but certainly gonna go back to.
Yeah, look, if I look at forties, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, do that, come back later or?
Yes.
At two thirty-five.
Thirty-five, yeah, okay. All right. For Jack, so Jack doesn't have.
Well, he didn't realize he was on a scheduled vacation. He told me, come back and do it.
No, 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 okay, I understand. No worries.
Okay, we'll see you two thirty-five.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks, Professor.
Bert, thank you.
Just let me know what you wanna drink, okay?
About two forty-five this afternoon.
About two forty-five? Is that, is that like beer thirty?
Thank you. Yep, that's right, smoking go. I go. Thank you, Stoll, man, already lived. I sent my daughter on, she took. Back trip for me the other day. And she, the sheriff was her, was her cook.
That's good, that's a good trade.
Yep.
Yeah.
I wonder, what did the sheriff cook? Whatever he sent. Uh, he did, he smoked up, uh, he smoked or cooked up pork butt, he did old pork and it steaks. Now, he likes, he likes, he enjoys, he enjoys cooking, he enjoys being in camp cooking.
Sure.
All they did, had a good time, was a guy that. Is. Alan Indiana Segans, Alan Segans is his uncle. Yeah, last, his last name is Werner. But he has a long history up the south fork and he wanted to go take a trip up there with his kid. He's a doctor up in Montana now. But, uh, let's say he's got a. He's a Segans somewhere along the line.
That's cool.
Yeah. You been thorough fair at all this year? Not yet, one more.
I have a question.
No, I'm ready, yeah.
My question is, this property is surrounded by federal. Does the federal air have an exemption of? Because that was. Air Force industrial type.
It was.
So, when they pulled out, did they have a special use for that designated?
No, it, it didn't. It's just BLM is BLM or.
Well, that's my question.
But actually, this is state trash.
Well, originally, it was federal and then they get, when they left, they get the state state. To city, county, states, county. Yeah, yeah, but I, my, my concern is that he doesn't come with some surprise thing that said this was, and because it was, he was for.
Oh, he's, he's argued that and we, we've agreed with him that it was used for that, but we've said.
But based on this, it says it can be used. It can now inconsistent with existing or planned use of surround here. My question is, there was never, is there a plan, was there a plan ever in place documented on federal land for the use of industrial air force, yeah, train?
Well, the, well, the county can put no restriction on any type of government entity on land. Be it state, federal, whatever, and that's, that's how this was, was never sold.
Any.
I understand that.
But any county land is touching it, and that's where I think.
But there's no county land that's touched.
But we own it, we own it now, so you're saying that, I guess I've looked at the map. That one parcel is now completely surrounded by.
And state enough.
And state. I see where you're, I see what you're saying.
I thought you were saying.
We are, we are. I get it, I don't know what it is. Extremely elegant, has some long range plan.
Tony had two thirty on there.
No.
I don't know why, I, I just, I've seen it.
Lloyd, when it goes from, Lloyd, that goes from government to private. It changes all the rules. The government, government can do anything on their land, but when they walk out, then it has, it reverts to what is around it.
What's highlighting this here? Hasn't varied. I mean, how, how can, how would, how would you justify this highlighted statement when it is not surrounded by any? Except government land.
No, it is surrounded by ag and, and open. And that's what we looked at when we did this process a year ago.
So it's government lands.
Not all that around it is not. I don't think. Uses in the area. You're talking to PLM?
Give me to the county.
Map server? Well, I think you can just look here at Park County land with map server. I think you have to go out as far as. What the private telling does. Now you should be able to.
Call my. Oh, wait. Keep yourself up.
I don't know, you know, I'd like to give you one website. That's where I missed out. I'm trying to get on. Uh, to Park County.
You can have. Use plan committee.
Well, there's not only, yeah, well, we will end up doing, but there's thirteen area. Once we assign those on, there's planning area, again, it's a region of thirteen, so we'll probably stick with that. The only thing I'm looking at is yard.
All right, you're.
And I said, we have added the paper, yep, and we have added to the paper.
Come on.
Ain't gonna let you go there.
I'm there, I just.
You are there, it, it just needs to flow. That's kind of weird here, you know? Or still populating.
Where's that fire? You just go.
Maybe they changed the county mine. You should be in. I want to go. Okay. Yeah.
Two ninety-five.
No, you should be. It's right.
It said right about here.
No.
It's right. There.
But you have to go out to the use of surround it.
And my point is, it's surrounded by the overwrapped estate land.
Right, but what's not used around it, right? Because those are not used properties, they're still stink. So what do we have?
But my question is, is there a special, is there, are these federal lands and state government type lands when the air force is there? Do they have?
Something?
A, a special, yeah.
No, they don't have it. They don't fall under.
I know they don't fall under, okay, but they have. And him to come up with some, say.
Like a government.
A government industrials site.
Not that I'm aware of, but we did the research on the last go-through. There's been several things proposed, there wasn't there a meat thing proposed there for a while? Because I remember they wanted my water for a while, and then it got too expensive, so we couldn't put it down there, but, um yeah, they actually came in and asked for, we did an estimate, but
I know, I, I, I don't wanna
Oh, Rocky Mountain customer.
Don't argue, but I know you've seen BLM maps, and they do, in, in the legend of the BLM map, there'll be little squiggly lines through the different things, and that some of them are set aside for mining exempt from many things, exempt from this, or exempt from that, or allowed for energy production or not.
Right.
And so I guess that's why, um, I'm not trying to justify, I'm just trying to figure out if he's holding the ace of the bowl somewhere that
Well, yes, yep. When they were an air force site, and then they
They included this entire
Did we rezone it then after that, did Park County
Not until last year.
Not until last year?
Last year.
See, when this was saying, originally it was federal land, then the, the, after air force took this full section for this whole big square, and gave it to the state land. And then just a few, a couple of years ago, we singled off with, with this to become private, that's where the building stuff is.
Well, would we
So now that this is private, it was never zoned, because prior to that, it was federal or, or public land.
Well, when the, the city took it over, um, it's an incubator site for any business to come in, so what if it was industrial?
It wasn't zoned at the time.
It wasn't zoned at the time.
So the city would have been told, no, you can't do that, if an industrial group wanted to take over Rocky Mountain or
Probably twice here.
Incubator site, because the state for their incubator site, said it was over.
Did the state
And that's what
Um, no, they deeded it to the city of power.
I know we knew whatever we want, but I'm basing for highlighted
Right.
Reasoning for not allowing it is, could be not true.
Right.
If this was for set aside for industrial site.
See, and there was actually some, a couple industrial type groups that were interested. But they didn't do it. So if we would have proved them, sold it to them, the county would have turned it down.
That could have been interesting.
Well, maybe, yes, maybe not, I mean, we, we opened the door for this deal. When you said you can't do it the way you're doing it, we gave them the S U P, in fact, that's a upsets me a lot most of the time, but we, we fast-tracked it for them, but we did. We opened the door and said, do this, 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 we had a special meeting for it.
And he hasn't changed anything, and what he wants to do, he wants to do
He wants to change that whole area to industrial.
Well, he wants to change it, but the use he wanted to have on it was
As a waste, he told me the special use permit to do everything he wanted to do.
He just wants to be able to sell it.
Originally, he came to us and like, oh, so we passed that, we sold it, that's that's federal rules.
I mean, the, the only reason behind this that I can think, if somebody wants to buy it, because
To put a different industrial use than what he has
And if it's owned industrial
Right, I know.
Any industry can come in there with that long-term product.
I'm just
The other part of industrial is the part about being next to a municipality or, you know, moving out, like some of the stuff along the edges of Powell or along the edge of the Cody.
I understand.
Not about the middle nowhere.
I'll, I'll be the first degree, it probably should be built industrial, I, we all tried to do that.
Yeah, but we
And then found that we couldn't.
And we, we couldn't have based on this, and that's one of the degrees, if there was some type of
The state would come into data against the law.
Well, it was specified, because it was used as
I, I don't believe so.
I don't believe so either, gee, I hate to have him, well, so I have to
So the county gets to say no law for us, do it, okay, I won't do the argument, I'm I took a year of public school, little time to overcome that. Lots of reasons for that, they, they get, try to get special representation. Probably obviously has a wood, I mean, it says it's
Basically, the way the law is, I don't know, right now. The government, any schools, gun, whatever, they can build where they want, what they want.
What they want.
No question of that. And you think I'm trying to get, like, a sentence to try to get on the street now? Seriously, I'm, guys, I work, I'm Begin to let, well, seems pretty
Okay, so now using that argument, I'm not, I'm sorry.
All using that argument, no, I'm sorry. Well, we can't really go against what our permits text, you know? Especially if he says, no, we're going to, we're strong.
Well, I'm not gonna feel that, I mean but, you know, you're, you're, you're totally breaking the law here.
I can say it.
I mean, I, I'm gonna start the one
I agree with you.
Well, I, I didn't want to push, but I thought it's That's, that's why I backed down, but I would like that, but Morning.
Morning. This morning. You ready to go hunting? You ready to go hunting?
I don't know, I wanna, I wanna try, we'll see. You throw any, throw any tags? I got a, I got a late, late season white sail on the South Fork, that's it.
There's a bacon going out.
Throw a hook on, keep tied up for a couple of months.
Wouldn't be surprised if it was easy away. He's probably good one sixty.
That was, that was a good one in there last year, and I went over to check my trail camera there. One day, eleven o'clock in the morning, I didn't carry a rifle. And he's standing right outside of the irrigation, you know? I saw him looking down at the binocular, had a double wear there, I drove down the trench with cameras. And like fifteen minutes later, I'm coming back, and it's like, still standing there.
It was just, it wasn't open?
Oh, yeah.
Went for a rifle. No gun. He was in Dunn's field last night, I've been five or two weeks. Man, they're just a little faster, man. You could have walked all the way faster this morning, the hoppers got everybody, you know? Not good. Not good at all. Hopefully it's better for the elk, though, right?
Have, have they talked to Hocko lately?
No, nothing.
Yeah, well, I, I talked to him last week.
Did he get sold?
Yeah, he's He didn't say whether he's actually closed or not, but he said it's sold, you know, of course, or he was really upset about that, the guy that used to work for him, he think about his cash up there.
Yep.
I'm ready to shoot someone.
That happened to another guy, too, same thing. Yeah.
Backed all that stuff out.
Yeah. Oh, you guys, you went in with him, didn't you?
I, I didn't go.
Oh, you didn't go?
No, it was just he and, uh, New Orleans.
Oh.
I guess New Orleans, that's hard to have.
Hopefully they dynamited that trail.
Well, I guess, I can tell you what, if I was young, getting into the bed, the trail wouldn't bother me.
Yeah.
But if I was older in age
Yeah.
And I'd go in there, see that trail the first time, and then, aye, I'm probably No, it's a little, uh, temper, it is, without a doubt, a dangerous trail to play wild.
Hey.
Good morning, sir.
I'll take the easy chair.
Yeah, you will slide.
Yeah, it's a great chair.
Especially depending on the conversation.
Yeah, I really like that chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't blame.
Thanks.
You need to be going for a bit, switch those chairs.
Wow. Send me a notice in the last
This is new, huh?
Yeah. We, uh, we still have some issues with people that can't attend or don't want to attend.
Yeah.
On the other side, decided it was just very public, be able to see what's going on, we don't keep them, but it's not there.
Yeah, yeah. Hello, that's Andy.
Yeah, you can dial in or you can watch it from your office.
Really, what's, what's it on?
Go to the county website, go to the commissioner's page, and you can click on it right there.
Cool.
Listen in the whole thing.
It's maybe some background noises.
Patty, you don't need to look for it.
I look scared, I try to tell her.
We all are Patty every day.
Yeah.
It's the nature of the world we live in. You guys are a little busy.
Just touch.
Just a touch.
Did you see your bill?
No, but I saw that Buck Creek Estates is back on this afternoon, though.
Six, probably.
Six, yes. The hits just keep coming, right?
Seems to be. The, uh
Oh, Mr. Jimmy Harry?
Yeah, we, good. So, the, uh Joy told us today that they were up to, we were up to twenty-three active subdivisions here recently at one time, we're at sixteen right now, they're in one way, one way, shape or form, active within the zoning part.
What are you at for the year?
There's the person that might be able to answer that, well, how many subdivisions are we at for?
Oh, I have no idea. I mean, I'll just, I mean, sixteen active on break.
But then, you know, once sixteen active compared, compare that to something from a couple of years, years ago.
Yeah.
You know, that might be a whole
I was gonna say, that sounds like a whole years.
I'm guessing it needs to order, you guys, I don't think like a, anything crazy important, but
Colin, I like your family picture where your boys are taller than you.
Yeah.
Well, not both of them.
Well, the other one's close.
He's still a lot stronger and smarter.
As long as you keep them believing that. That's a good thing.
I want to sit as long as I have to check with the car keys.
I never was smarter than my oldest, and he surpassed me as stronger about ten years ago.
Yeah. They're lucky they got their mom's brains. We, Nick went on a, a rotary exchange two and a half years ago. And we wrote letters at the orientation that would be read, you know, six months into it, or whatever, and we just read them the other day. And Nick said, um let's just cut me to the quick, which was neither of us are gonna be lawyers. We figured out another path.
I, I remember having a conversation with my younger brother, and, uh, we're going to marry a lawyer, and she said we were encouraging him to go to college, and she said, you need to go to college, she said, you're way too smart to be an outfitter. Said when you, the end was near, the end was, the end was approaching. And that's for you, I'll give you a favor, to your text, I just got it last night. I'm sorry now. Thank you. Well, it's also ten fifteen, so I'm sorry. Welcome everybody, and we'll open up a public hearing for the kids' variance requests. We're gonna have, we have Joy go pitch it for him.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, in front of you should be a staff report and associated materials for the request from Christopher and Mariah Good. Um, they're seeking a variance, they would like to, um, have the opportunity to apply for an S U P for a wholesale building and business exceeding five thousand square feet, this is in the GRP General World Powell Zonetta Strip. Uh, I would like to note that the nature of the business was not mentioned in the application, um, however, I'll provide the details on that shortly. Um, just note, if the variance is approved, it would allow the applicants to apply for a special use permit with site plan review for a major wholesale business in a zoning district where this type of use is otherwise prohibited. Regarding the nature of the business, we spoke with the applicants on May tenth, they stated that they store fireworks for their fireworks distribution business in the shop building and storage containers that are currently on the site. They also indicated that there is an office in the residence on the property in support of their fireworks business. Regarding building sizes, um, in the application, the applicants mentioned a building and business exceeding five thousand square feet. Um, our records show that there are two building permits on file for the property, permit twenty eighteen oh oh four for a twenty-four hundred, uh, seventy square foot residence and permit two thousand eighteen thousand zero five for a forty-eight hundred square foot shop. The county accessories office lists the home size as twenty-two hundred eighty square feet and the outbuilding as forty-eight hundred square feet. The Wyoming State Fire Inspector stated he inspected approximately ninety-six hundred square foot single level steel storage building. Um, and then in discussion with the applicants on May tenth, they stated that there are eighteen storage containers on the property, we estimate each one to be five forty um, and therefore we would estimate an additional five thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet, um, of floor area for the business on top of the the shop building, so I'm not a hundred percent certain what the actual square footage is, but those are the, those are the, um, numbers that we've been able to find. Um, the regulations that apply are the Park County Wyoming two thousand fifteen Development Standards and Regulations adopted September fifteenth of two thousand fifteen. We classify, um, this particular use as a major wholesale business, which is defined as building sizes of more than five thousand square feet of floor area or developed land over one acre. Again, this is in a GRP zoning district, and major wholesale businesses are prohibited in that zoning district. The regulations provide provisions for a variance where someone's requesting you do something that is otherwise prohibited. Um, you'll see chapter one, section seven A, seven B, and seven C, address, purpose, applicability, and procedure for a variance. Ownership is affirmed, um, by a warrant T D from October of two thousand seventeen to Christopher Good and Mariah Good, and that is recorded with the clerk's office. This particular property is thirty-three, approximately thirty-three acres, um, it is just up at Highway fourteen A, near, uh, one of the, between Garland and Byron. And the legal description is there, has a property address of one twenty-seven, US Highway fourteen A, Powell. We provided a location map for you to kind of see the topography out there. Little bit of history on this, um, as I mentioned, there are a couple of building permits on the property. The residential building permit, um, was permitted as a residence. And on January fifth, our call log from two thousand eighteen indicated that staff had confirmed with Chris Good at that time that there was no office in the home, and so the word office was crossed off on the application. And then on the shop permit, originally it was written as a warehouse, and when questioned by staff about the use of the warehouse, the applicant stated it would be for personal use, so staff, staff had crossed the word warehouse at that time and added the word shop, and it's also noted, um, on the office use section of that permit that the, um building is for credit use only, not for commercial use. Um, planning and zoning had witnessed some advertising for commercial firework sales on the property, this led to a violation notice, which was sent to the goods. This led to a violation notice, which was sent to the Goods', um, earlier this year. Immediately after receiving their notice, they came to discuss, um, the use of the property with us, and I'll just quickly summarize some of that. Um, Mr. Good stated that he stores his own stuff for his own stores, stuff meaning fireworks. He intended to store his fireworks for his own storage hobby. He has approximately eighteen storage containers situated immediately adjacent to the accessory structure. He is not intending to make the shop a storefront, but he's interested in putting a smaller storefront at some time. He has storefronts in several other areas that he distributes the fireworks to. Um, he has two trucks for delivery and receives two from the property and to retail locations around the region. He hopes to build another home on this property. He has held fireworks displays for vendors on this property and he has held displays on the property for the public. Um, we did several, we did some investigating, just checking into the violation, found some video, um, on their website for Western Pyro Enterprises, where they clearly stated that they have wholesale warehouse. And so that's what led to this classification. Um, the, the Goods are here today because they are trying to comply as a result of that news violation. And so this process is required in order for them to seek that compliance. Uh, let's see. They originally were appealing the decision on the, uh, the violation that they drew them. So we're here today just addressing the variance. And, um, in support of this use, we did find a Pal Tribune article from July twenty-second, which sort of talks a little bit about Western Pyro, which is the name of the business enterprise. It's sort of what they do and the types of, of volumes of business that they might be doing. Uh, neighboring land use, we show you a figure here. Um, there's a mixture of residential, residential vacant and agricultural uses. The closest neighboring residence is approximately one hundred thirty-five feet northwest of the west end of the warehouse. And within one mile east of the east property line, there are two large rock product mines. On the site, um, as I mentioned, there's the warehouse or shop building and, um, it is immediately accessed from Highway fourteen A. So we have the existing, um, shop building, the residence, uh, which is approximately twenty feet to southwest of that structure. And then, um, there's a loading dock on that warehouse as well, where they pull the trucks up to load and unload. And then the storage containers that were mentioned previously. Um, aerial photos can show, um, semi-trailers on the property and the, the remaining area of the parcel is undeveloped at the site. This particular property is not within an overlay district. Uh, legal notices, the, of course, this public hearing has to be noticed according to our rules and that was done in the Pal Tribune. Uh, we also sent neighbor notices out to all properties within six hundred and sixty feet of subject property. Um, agency referrals were sent out, uh, because we refer to any local, state or federal agency with relevant interests or expertise. We did receive some responses back from a few people. Um, the State of Wyoming Department of Fire Prevention and Electrical Safety, uh, Fire Inspector Nick Hudson had indicated that he noted the existence of a ninety-six hundred square foot single level steel storage building and additional conics containers not secured to be ground outside of the structure. Some additional comments were that the facility is not open to the public and there's no retail sale of fireworks in the building. He did meet with Chris Good at the facility and determined that the facility is following, um, requirements of separation. He noted chapter fifty-six explosives and fireworks at the International Fire Code. Um, and he further encouraged the applicant to contact him or his agency in the future if there's ever any intention to change the purpose, function or use of the property, can help determine additional requirements that may be necessary. YDOT, Department of Transportation was contacted in an email of July twenty-sixth or July sixteenth of this year. They indicated that the access review committee met the morning of July sixteenth to consider the request for a variance to the minimum spacing distance for a commercial access. The committee voted three to zero to approve the variance, um, and indicated that it was only for wholesale fireworks business. If the applicant chooses to expand or open a retail location on a property, they would need to apply for a commercial access and a traffic impact study would likely be required. On July twenty-first, YDOT stated in an email that they approved the reclassification of the existing access from field to commercial. The commercial access permit will be restricted to their current fireworks business. Um, and the expansion would require an application. They did also mention occasional fireworks shows will be allowed provided there is no encouragement onto the highway right-of-way. On July twenty-seventh, we received the official letter from YDOT, which affirmed that changing the use from field access to commercial access has been approved for construction. I don't know that they're actually constructing. I think the access authority there, we can confirm with the applicant. I believe that just means they can use it for commercial as it's been used for field access up to now. The Park County Treasurer has stated the tax is a pain in the hole for this property. Uh, reached out to the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms since our rules indicate that explosives are regulated by them and that we defer to them. Uh, according to, um, ATF, they provided the following information. The Goods have federal explosives license under the name of Pyrotech Professionals. That's a different business name uh, than the previous one for display fireworks, which is operated in a different location. ATF does regulate display fireworks. The Goods business, Western Pyro Enterprises, which is at the site, um, of this particular variance request deals in consumer fireworks, which ATF does not regulate. Note that we don't have a permit on file for the display fireworks business, which is located at six ten lane nine in Powell. Um, ATF indicated that display fireworks related to this business, the pyrotech business, are not to be stored on this property, either the one at sixteen twenty-nine or the one of, subject of this particular application. Um, they do have permitted storage magazine and undisclosed location ten minutes away outside of Park County. Um, if there was a display, if there was storage of display fireworks at the Highway fourteen A location, that would require an ATF permit and is unknown if the Goods are storing display fireworks up there. They haven't officially responded. They have no wildlife comments on this project. Just yesterday, we received a response from Public Works. Um, they indicated that they don't have any concerns at this time. Uh, the property per se acts off the highway, so that's not really their jurisdiction. Um, and they further stated that they don't have any drainage related concerns if they understand that their structures are planned. So just FYI on that. We have not received any public comments on this application. So as you're aware, um, we do have variance approval standards that must be met and all of these conditions must be met to grant a variance. I'm going to cover each condition. I'll provide a summary of the applicant's, um, testimony from their application and then I'll provide some input from staff. So the first condition is there are special circumstances or conditions which are peculiar to the land, building or structure for which the variance is sought and do not apply generally to the land or buildings in the neighborhood and have not resulted from any activity applicant subsequent to the adoption of the regulations. Uh, the applicant's response is the property is located in the northeast corner of a GRP zoning district. It's not agricultural or suitable for growing much of anything. Much of the land adjacent to this parcel is used for industrial purposes and the land is clearly suitable for such uses. As the GRP zoning district does not recognize in any manner a major commercial industrial wholesale business simply due solely to the square foot size of the facility and which business has housed. The applicants continue by stating that agriculture and use is allowed in GRP. The applicant states that comparing their major wholesale business with other uses or structures allowed in GRP, the differences appear arbitrary and are not based on the actual business suitability of the land. The applicant states that their warehouse is on intrusive and reasonable use of the land and structure due to the very limited uses of the land. The applicant offered to provide evidence that their closest neighbors consent to the request of use and that the fire marshal and YDOT believe the use is safe and within the requirements and that access is safe and appropriate. Their full response is within this packet. Staff, uh, added, there are no special circumstances or conditions peculiar to the land, building or structure for which the variance is sought and do not apply generally to the land or buildings in the neighborhood and have not resulted from any activity applicant subsequent to the adoption of the regulations. All lots, parcels and property in the area are subject to GRP zoning, thus the provision, um, major wholesale business use applies equally to all land, buildings and structures in that zoning district. When the applicant made application for their building permits, there was conversation between the applicant and staff regarding the intended uses. And the applicant stated that the structure was intended for personal use and personal storage and there was no office located in the residence. The opportunity for staff to classify a use is at the time of application. Therefore, the discussion of use was had with the applicant. Hence, the given classifications and the notation on the permit that the use is for private use only, not for commercially used. The applicant knew or should have known the structure was permitted for private use only and major wholesale business use is prohibited on the property located in GRP. Number two, circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of land, building or structure. The applicant states that, uh, the standards and regulations applying use is permitted by right or SGP and GRP that would clearly have more actual impact than what they propose. They list classifications and definitions for community, public, utility and private public uses and recreational uses. The applicant further states that most of the recreational uses would involve participation by many people. The applicants argue it is obvious that strict application provisions would deprive them of the reasonable use of their land and warehouse based on arbitrary and inconsistent classifications and uses. Staff responds, there are no circumstances or conditions that cause strict application, uh, of other provisions to deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. Applicants have approved building permit, again for private use only. They have the ability to use the structure consistent with the approved permit. In GRP, there exist many uses and structures that are available to be permitted by right via nondiscretionary administrative permits issued by planning and zoning. There are also many uses allowed in this district contingent upon board approval of a special use permit. Various reasonable uses of the land and structure are permissible on the property at this time. Also reasonable use does not necessarily include the most profitable use or even a profitable use. Number three, granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use thereof. The applicant states the land is very easy practical uses, granting of the variance is necessary to allow them to use the property for wholesale purposes as described. Staff adds, granting of the variance is not necessary for reasonable use of the land or structure as mentioned. Various permissible reasonable uses exist for this land at this time. Uh, many alternative uses and structures are allowed provided appropriate permits are obtained. Number four, granting of the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the regulations and will not compromise the integrity of the land use plan. It will not be injurious to the properties in vicinity or otherwise detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. The applicant states the purpose and intent of the standards and regulations as set forth in chapter one, section one D are to protect, promote and enhance the public health, safety and provide for planned and orderly development in Park County in a manner consistent with constitutional rights of property owners, balancing the needs of the changing population with legitimate environmental concerns and help ensure that developments cater a fair portion of the public costs associated with those developments. It is in the intent of the standards and regs to establish a balance between legitimate rights and the protection of public welfare. They further state that the warehouse is not a public building in any manner and it is hard to conceive how not allowing the current structure promotes and enhances the public health, safety or provides for an orderly development in a manner consistent with their constitutional rights. Uh, their previous comments support the idea that a variance would provide for planned and orderly development. Staff responds that granting of the variance is not in harmony with the general purposes of the regulations or intent uses classified as major wholesale business. Major wholesale business uses are prohibited in GRP. Such prohibition, prohibition is likely because the county felt these types of businesses are not suitable in the rural environment. This is supported by the land use plan, which places this property and general area of the county in a land use suitability category called low intensity rural land. Within this category, regional service, commercial, retail and recent, regional service, commercial wholesale land uses are considered not suitable. We provided, um, figure four, which is table three from the land use plan, which shows those, um, suitability categories and guidelines for each of these types of uses. In granting of variance, the board ran first conditions to prevent or minimize adverse effects from proposed variance. Um, such conditions shall be limited to issues directly related to the impacts of the proposed use and shall not be proportional to the impacts. Effective approval, the development for which, or variance is granted shall not be constructed or established until the development has secured all other approvals required by these rules. So therefore, again, if you approve this variance, they will need to obtain a special use permit with site plan review in order to actually commence the variance. A variance shall expire, become void one year following the date of approval unless construction development is commenced prior to the expiration date and diligently pursued, the board may extend that authorization or up to an additional year for good cause. We provided a summary of our findings, which have already been stated throughout the staff report. We provided some photographs for you, um, of the property showing the home, the building, some of the other structures on the property and, uh, sort of the remoteness, um, of the surroundings. Staff has made a recommendation that based upon the evidence presented, the applicants have not met all the conditions required to grant a variance and therefore staff recommends denial of this variance request. I'm available for any questions you want to ask.
Good. Any questions? Public hearing? I'm sure that I would be able to have something to say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, I am Colin Simpson. I represent, uh, Mariah Good, who are out here with me today. And thank you for hearing this today. Thank you, Joy. You always give a thorough and good presentation, although I don't always agree with that. These are three letters from, uh, neighbors support, in support of the, uh, variance. And I, I had emailed these to Jolene yesterday, but I'm not sure if they got out or she even received them. But, uh, this first letter is from Jesse and Peter Kokowski, who are, are at one oh one lane nine in Powell. No problem with Chris Good having fireworks warehouse above our property. We're not concerned or worried about his storage or use of the fireworks and feel free to contact. And these are the people that I think are four hundred and thirty-five feet.
No, that is south.
That is a south property. And then Mountain Construction. And you know that, I like my photo better of, uh, the, uh, the area because I think it delineates it and maybe you've seen it more. It kind of delineates this whole area north of fourteen A i- in a clearer way. I'm sorry, bring the copies for you, Joy, but you can look at mine. Where, and, and we've all driven from Garland to Level and gone up on that hill and thought we've just landed on the moon. I, I believe that the reason this is in GRP is it's because it's on the extreme northeast corner of the county. And to follow the property, it, it really followed the county lines, GRP, rather than breaking it up and making this an industrial area, which really is what it's more akin to. Mountain Construction is just, uh, to the east of it. And you'll see the letter from Kim Wilson of Mountain Construction where they, uh, they are in support and believe it is to be very beneficial to Park County and its residents to allow for a zoning change. Um, so they can run their business at that location. And then the, uh, last page, uh, is the letter from Greg Middleton.
Middleton.
Middleton. Yes, Greg Middleton, uh, at one forty-seven Highway fourteen A. And, um, they, uh, they are in support and, uh, are the closest neighbor. And he indicates that it's very clean, wide operation. It looks perfectly nice, so they have no problem with it. There are no negative comments about this and, and Joy already talked about the letter from the fire marshal, uh, YDOT and ATF. Joy did make a comment about ADF that, I, I think you said that, uh, storage of display fireworks on the property was not allowed under the ATF permit. That's not correct. The ATF permit allows storage at places that the ATF approves of. But the ATF is not going to tell anyone who asks where that storage might be. And I am a knight at liberty to say where that storage is either for those display fireworks, but the ATF manages that. That's what the permit covers, the display fireworks, and they do not manage the consumer fireworks. They don't store any of the display fireworks at their home in, uh, lane nine. And, uh, so what they have is, uh, a warehouse that's obviously over five thousand square feet. They apologize for being here under these circumstances without having gone through something to receive a variance before they enlarged the, the building. The, the issue of what is a personal or a private use, I think, got all confused in two thousand and eighteen when they first made the application. And you can see where Mariah Good, I believe, completed that application and it says warehouse. But then this, it was crossed out and it said shop. Chris Good was asked, well, what's it for? He said, for personal use. Well, we store the fireworks that we own to supply our store, so it's our personal use there. And then if you look at the definition of commercial under the, uh, regulations, under storage, this is, uh, H fifty-one, storage area. under storage, this is page 51, storage area and storage building. It talks about private items stored by the owner on the owner's property. Commercial, a fee is charged for the services storing items for others. Well, there's no fee that the goods pay to store their own product on their property. So I think that got all screwed up in 2018. That first comment about he stores his own stuff for his own stores when page four of the staff report, that's what he said in 2018, not what he said in May of 2020. Like, he may have reiterated that again, but that's what he said in 2018. But that's still the case. They're permitted, the fire marshal has approved everything. And one other thing I noticed in the regulations under hazardous waste storage. And I know fireworks aren't hazardous waste, but says solid waste shall be stored in enclosed buildings or containers. Those 18 containers out there hold fireworks. Chris has been told by the fire marshal that that's really how they should be stored. That's the best way to store them. If there were a fire, it's not as if it would be a humongous crater in the ground. It would be a fire. If it was in the warehouse, it would be a fire. But in those storage containers, there's very little oxygen, and it's not really going to go anywhere. So, I mean, just looking at the area, and I know there's a sag across the road to the south, and certainly there are all of those provisions for agricultural production and operations that allow for things that are prepaid. And rightly so in Park County, but again, this just illustrates the need for an update of the standards and regulations, because you guys are dealing with these issues all the time. With standards that are really tough to apply and with all these pressures. But to me, it seems like this property on the edge of the GRP out in that area where it is appropriate, that this would be appropriate for a variance. And I have stated in here, and I've stated before, you may get tired of hearing me kind of say the same thing. Just the difference between a 5,000 square foot building and a 10,000 square foot building seems to me 20 years later to be somewhat arbitrary. When, you know, it's, when you can have a use that's permitted by right that is actually more impactful than what maybe the goods would do with an 11,000 square foot with those containers. But they want to do, they want to operate legally and within the law, and apologize that they haven't done that to date since they got these original permits, and they want to do what's right and move to the HUP phase of this. And so we would appreciate you granting variance requests. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Rest of the board needs to be aware of this is a public hearing. We have another public hearing at 10:45. So what's the board's desire? Are you ready to make a decision on this right now? We need to take more public comment? I'm sure there might be. Does anyone else want to do any more public comment on this? Any more public comment on this? Chair, moving to the closing of the hearing. Okay, so let's turn that, Mr. Tilden.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second that. Okay, then moving second to approve the variance. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Yes, that happened.
Thank you. I didn't know it would be that quick, but.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all.
Rest of August. And your comment about the land use plan, we're hearing that quite a bit.
And I'm happy to help in any way you think I might be able to do.
That's actually been recorded. That's. Our call's in, our call's in. I already got a list of pages. You're on it now. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Next up, we have public comment, open public hearings on the Golden Willa Minor Subdivision. Park County Planning and Zoning Planner Two, Kim Delvin, is assisted by Assistant Patty Oblek, so you guys take it away.
Okay. We have before you a staff report for the Golden Willa Minor Subdivision number 57. A major subdivision application was received on May 14th of 2021, including payment and the other supporting documents. The subdivision classification was subsequently changed by the planning director to a minor subdivision. A minor subdivision application was received July 12th of 2021, and the difference in the application fee of $50 was applied to the applicant's outstanding balance. The applicant requests approval of a one lot minor subdivision consisting of one 4.27 acre lot for residential use. The minor subdivision classification was received or reached because a portion of this parcel was created as an exempt remainder of the two lot Carter Simple Sub 22, which was created in 2004. Should this subdivision be approved, three lots will have been created from the original tract of record, making this a minor subdivision. Ownership of the property is John and Gail Carter. And the subdivision is located approximately 10 miles northwest of Ralston, Wyoming, and southeast at the intersection of County Road 22H and County Lane 9. The parcel is addressed as 909 Road 22 and a half. The subdivision is located in the GRP General Rural Powell Zoning District, and the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with the GRP zoning district. The neighboring land uses are primarily agricultural. This is the surrounding land. There is a proposed minor subdivision development for residential use just north of this proposed lot in the same tract of land. The Carter Simple Subdivision 32 is located northwest of this proposed subdivision. According to the county assessor records, this parcel currently has a residence, a guest house, and two accessory use structures. There is presently a special use permit allowing a minor institutional use for a group home on this parcel. This group home is known as Heart Mountain New Beginnings, and the special use permit shall expire upon the sale of this property. As shown in figure four, you can see that the topography is relatively flat. This parcel is not located within a one mile of a municipality, so municipal review is not required. Notices that are required have been met in the sense that the notice of intent to subdivide was published May 11th and May 18th of 2021 in the Powell Tribune. The planning department published a notice of public hearing for this hearing in the Powell Tribune on July 27th, 2021, and August 10th, 2021, with one of those notices being at least 14 days prior to this hearing. On July 29th, 2021, certified notice was mailed to the property owners of all properties within 660 feet of the subject property. This staff report was sent to the applicant and the Board of County Commissioners prior to this scheduled public hearing. Agency referrals. County regulations specify that the planning department forward all subdivision applications to the Park County Treasurer, Public Works, Fire District, Weed and Pest District, Small Wastewater Administrator, Wyoming Game and Fish, any other county official or agency the planning director deems appropriate. All agencies have been notified and their responses are listed for your review. One to mention is the Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investments responded in a letter dated June 10th, 2021 that this proposed subdivision is located near state-owned land. They noted any access across or performed on state lands requires prior authorization. We have received two written public comments expressing concerns about taking land of agricultural production. There was a pre-application meeting that occurred December 17th of 2020 and was attended by Steve Fullwiler of Morrison and Mary Lee, Brian Edwards of Public Works, and the planning department staff. A title report with the commitment date of February 23rd, 2021 was submitted with the application. No roads are proposed for this subdivision. Solid waste disposal services are available through private providers. Fire protection is available from Fire Protection District number one. Mail delivery is available. Park County School District One stated they have a school bus stop at the corner of Road 22H and Road 9. There are no known landsides, steep slopes, rockfalls, or other hazardous features known to exist on the property. The Powell Park Torque Conservation District has provided earth soils report. The property is located in the Heart Mountain Irrigation District, and the water distribution plan is completed. An initial inspection from Park County Weed and Pest revealed noxious weeds are present, and a long-term noxious weed plan is required and has been approved. Means of access, legal access exists by way of both a county road and a private access easement. Waste water requirements. There is an existing small wastewater system that was permitted in October 20th of 2008. The perp rate and depth of groundwater reported for this approved small wastewater permit is sufficient for the subsurface evaluation data required for this proposed subdivision. Staff did not require a new subsurface evaluation because the subdivision is not intended to cause additional development on the property. If future development is proposed, a new subsurface evaluation will be required at that time. The perp test completed for that permit in 2008 demonstrated an average perp rate of 12 minutes per inch. The groundwater cut completed in 2008 revealed no groundwater at a depth of 12 feet. Based upon evidence of the excavation, cut adequate separation distances exists. The sketch plan shows lot configurations, but the locations of future structures, septic systems, and wells, if any, have yet to be determined. The location of the existing small wastewater system is shown on the search plan. The Small Wastewater Administrator stated in their review that conventional septic systems would likely be sufficient should this subdivision be approved and development occur. Domestic water will be provided by individual onsite wells to be permitted and approved by the Wyoming State Engineers Office. A water well sample was collected from a well located at 937 County Road 23. The sample was received by Energy Labs on March 19th of 2021. The analysis indicated the water sample does meet the Safe Drinking Water Act requirement for bacteria, because no E. coli or total coliform was detected. Nitrogen was detected at 1.74 milligrams per liter, which is below the maximum contaminant level of 10. Sulfate was detected at a level of 380 milligrams per liter, which is above the maximum contaminant level of 250. Total dissolved solids was detected at a level of 790 milligrams per liter, which is above the maximum contaminant level of 500. However, these are elements listed in the National Secondary Drinking Water Standards, and the levels in excess of maximums are not considered a threat to human health. Agricultural impacts. There will be a reduction in land available for agricultural use upon the development of this proposed subdivision lot. The applicants will be required to comply with the recommendations of County Weed and Pest regarding the control of weeds. The residential development plan for the subdivision is not expected to introduce pest or litter problems or domestic pet disturbances to livestock. The applicants are required to maintain irrigation facilities according to the Irrigation District Bureaus. The applicants have not proposed any changes that would be expected to adversely impact existing agricultural activities or related uses. The plaque shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Act, Wyoming Farm and Ranch Act of 1991 on the final plaque. Let's see, this proposed subdivision is located in an agricultural overlay district. Anticipated impacts to agriculture have been addressed herein. Water rights. This proposed subdivision is located in the Heart Mountain Irrigation District, and the water distribution plan has been completed. Alkali Creek borders the south boundary of Propose Lot 1. The south 250 or less feet of Propose Lot 1 is located in the FEMA Zone A floodplain. A letter of map amendment was issued in December of 2009, removing the existing residents from the floodplain. Any further development on the proposed lot that is located within the floodplain will require floodplain permit to the Planning and Zoning Department or ALONA issued through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Subdivisions retaining all water rights with no change of use are exempt from state review. Therefore, no state review is required. Minor subdivisions shall install electrical power service adjacent to the lot lines, and natural gas available within 400 feet shall be stuck to the lot lines. Telephone service shall be stuck with a service connection to the edge of each lot line unless quality consistent wireless cell service is available. Garland Light and Power provides electricity to the proposed lot currently. TCT has terrestrial wireless available in the area and can provide internet and voice phone to this location depending on the line of sight. And I believe Black Hills Energy currently provides natural gas to existing residents. The minor subdivision need not submit covenants or homeowners association agreement unless the proposal includes roads or other common facilities maintained by the lot owner. Lot standards have been met, easement standards apply, and no roads are proposed. No other improvements are proposed.
Four minutes, three minutes left.
I thought I was going to. Subdivision is located in the floodplain overlay district, and as I mentioned before, there's a ALONA on the existing property. In an ag overlay, the ag impacts were addressed earlier in the report. P and Z Commission has reviewed the sketch plan in July of 2021 and approved with recommended approval conditions. All of the conditions are for final plat review. The two, well, I should say most of them were for final plat. The two that were required submissions have been met, and that is the long-term noxious weed plant plan is submitted, and the water distribution plan has been submitted. And we have a summary of our findings and our recommended conditions by staff, or we have some standard language for easements that must be identified on the plat. The final plat shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of 1991, and the applicant shall otherwise comply with the standards in the Park County laws and regulations, and the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming Statute 158306.
Public hearing. We might be running this one over into the other one a little bit, but I think we can do that since they're both the same applicant. But public comment, it was very public comment on this. Any questions from the board for staff? Just, there's a couple headings. Some of these females, Golden Willa, major subdivision.
Okay.
That's all scratched out. But this is a preliminary. Okay, we had some public comment back there. I know who you are, but you can state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner. Thank you very much. Manager for Heart Mountain Irrigation District. We've been working.
Your name?
Tyler Whittler.
Thank you.
A little nerve wracking.
That's all right. We're not as bad as Joe Lux.
Been working really well with Mr. Carter. There's been a lot of discussion in the community. We, our goal, the district's goal, is to make sure that when these subdivided lands are turned over to new landowners, they can get their water. That's pretty much our focus, and that they can get it without any consequence. So Johnny has completed. So, John, you have completed the plan. The Hart Mountain Irrigation District's commission scope is extremely narrow. We understand that. And our only recourse is water, water, water delivery. We do have an outstanding balance owed for the subdivision fees. Mr. Carter's been at the last board meeting. Our mountain commission upheld that, and they're still outstanding and would like you to just consider that. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Wolffield.
Thank you. I would question whether we do that here or whether we do that for the final plat since they still have a ways to go. So that could be a condition on final plat.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further public comment? Oh, oh.
May I respond?
Did I see the applicant?
The applicant, John Carter, would like to respond to the board and Mr. Whittler. We are planning to pay the fee. There was some dispute because we was not notified of the increase in the fees for July first until after July first, so there was an unexpected several thousand dollar bill. And we will take care of it. It just, I was not able to take care of it before this meeting.
Further public comment?
And then?
Moving second to close the hearing, further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, most carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sketch plan, minor subdivision fifty-seven, Golden Whittle.
Moving second to further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Most carries. Okay, well, we have Helen in on the wire. At this time, open the public hearing for the Bloom Sage Minor Subdivision, sketch plan review number sixty-four.
Chairman, for the staff report.
Read very fast.
I'm gonna try.
Bloom Sage Minor Subdivision fifty-four, applicant was received, application was received in May of two thousand twenty-one, including payment and supporting documents. Applicant requests approval for a three lot minor subdivision consisting of one six point five acre lot, one six point six acre lot, and one five point five six acre lot residential use subdivision. Should the subdivision be approved, an exempt parcel of eighty-eight point five nine acres will remain. Owner of the property is John Daniel Carter. This subdivision is located approximately ten miles north of the west of Ralston and west of the intersection of County Road twenty-two H and County eighty-nine. The address of the property is addressed as nine oh two County Road twenty-two and nine thirty-seven County Road twenty-three. Zoning district is General Laurel Powell, and the lot sizes proposed are consistent with the zoning district. Neighboring land uses are primary agricultural. Residential uses are located directly to the north and west of the proposed lots. Carter's simple subdivision with lots located adjacent to and near these proposed lots. The parcel is currently vacant, irrigated land, and the topography is relatively flat, not within one mile of the municipality, so no review is required. Notice of intent was published May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and May eighteenth in the Powell Tribune. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Powell Tribune, July twenty-seventh and August tenth, two thousand twenty-one. July twenty-ninth certified notices were mailed to property owners within six hundred and sixty feet of the property, and this staff report was sent to the applicant and board of county commissioners prior to this public hearing. Agency notices were sent out, and the responses are listed here for you. I have, again, a response from the Wyoming Office of State Lands stating that any access across or worked performed on state lands will require prior authorization from the state. Two written public comments have been received expressing concern with taking land out of agricultural production. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the sketch plan in July twenty-first of this year and recommended approval with conditions, and those conditions are listed here. All conditions are for final plat review. The two that were required submissions for this hearing have been met. That's a long-term noxious weed plant, and again, the irrigation water distribution plan, which probably is the same as we've been waiting for payment on that. Title report was received with the application. No roads are proposed for this subdivision. Solid waste disposal services are available through private provider. Fire protection is available. Mail delivery is available. Park County School District Number One stated they will have school bus pickup and drop off locations near the subdivision. There are no known landslides, steep slopes, rockfalls, or other hazardous features known to exist on this property. Powell Clark Sport Conservation District has provided soils report. Property is again within Hart Mountain Irrigation District and the water distribution plan is complete. Initial inspection for noxious weeds has been suspended. There are noxious weeds present, and weed plant has been approved. Access from, is legal access from County Road twenty-two H is proposed for all three lots. Proposed Lot Three will be provided an access easement through Proposed Lot Two. Subsurface evaluation was completed on May fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one. Perp test data was collected on Proposed Lot One and Proposed Lot Three. An excavation was made on Proposed Lot One to the depth of ten feet. Groundwater was discovered at ten feet. Excavation cut was made on Proposed Lot Three to a depth of nine feet, and groundwater was discovered at seven point three. Based on evidence from the excavation cuts, adequate separation systems exist. The sketch plan does show the locations of those perp tests. Small Wastewater Administrator has stated that conventional septic systems will likely be sufficient should the subdivision be approved and developed. Domestic water will be provided by individual wells on site and permitted through the Wyoming State Engineers Office. Water well sample was taken from nine thirty-seven County Road twenty-three, and the analysis indicated that it meets the Safe Water Drinking Water Act requirements for bacteria because no E. coli or total coliform was detected. Nitrate was detected at one point seven four milligrams per liter, which is below the maximum contaminant level of ten. Sulfate, total dissolved solids were all detected, and they were above their maximum contaminant level, but those are elements listed in the National Secondary Drinking Water Standards, and levels in excess of maximums are not considered a threat to human health. The majority of the property appears to be in agricultural production. Applicant will require to comply with the requirements of state of the county being passed regarding weed control. Applicant will be expected to comply with the requirements of Hart Mountain Irrigation District. The residential development plan for the subdivision is not expected to introduce pests or litter problems or domestic pet disturbances to livestock. Applicant has not proposed any changes with the expected to adversely impact existing agricultural activities related uses. We are located within agricultural overlay district. Water rights, Hart Mountain Irrigation, no stream, river, no stream or river paths within or adjacent to the proposed subdivision lots. Utilities will be provided and are required to be stubbed to each lot line. Garland Mine and Power has the capacity to serve the proposed three lot subdivision. Electricity is adjacent to each lot. Black Hills Energy has capacity to provide natural gas. Natural gas is adjacent to each lot except for Foam Lot Three. TCT has wireless available in the area, and they can provide internet and voice phone to the location depending on the line of sight. My understanding is the applicant may be applying for a variance for the requirement to provide natural gas to Proposed Lot Three. We have not received that request yet. Overlay district impacts, the overlay districts have been addressed, and we have a summary of our findings. Our requested recommended conditions, which again is the standard language for easements being identified on the final plat. Natural gas must be made adjacent to Proposed Lot Three, and the subdivision improvements agreement shall be required prior to final plat review. The final plat shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act of nineteen ninety-one, and applicant shall otherwise comply with standards of Park County Development Regulations. If you have any questions, which I have.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Public hearing, any public comments? Mr. Whittler?
Tyler Whittler, Hart Mountain Irrigation District, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner, just the same, let's take into consideration of the subdivision used in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments? Anything from that?
First, I, we intend to pay the bail within the next couple of weeks to Hart Mountain. So I will be talking with Tyler how to take care of that. The other thing is we have a sign line agreement for putting natural gas line to the southwest corner of Lot Three, so we have a trencher reserved for Friday and Saturday, and it is our understanding that we'll be putting a new line in the week after that, so before the final plat, we are have full intention to have that natural gas line buried and serviceable to Lot Three, so we're not going to be requesting a baronage.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you, and it's very difficult decision here because the last, previous one to me was an overend, so, you know, sent off on homeside already. My question, John, I guess, might be a little bit too personal over here, but, you know, your family, the homestead of that country up there, is there reasoning for separating this protected agriculture? It seems to be a huge public outcry about removing public or protected ag land. Is this minimal productive land? I know you have the right to be in here. I totally understand that, and I feel for you, but, you know, you have a background too, so help me out.
We have closed our boys ranch and taken our farm. We're returned to farming. My wife and I would like to semi-retire, and all of our money is tied up in our land, and I would love to sell this to a land trust or something that would keep it in agriculture. We offered it to the adjoining neighbors. We was not even able, you know, to get close to what, you know, we needed. Also, we're not interested in selling it at an agricultural price to a neighbor, and they turn around and subdivide it, and so we need to get the maximum income to be able to retire because our children are not expressing an interest in continuing to farm. And I'm as sad about it as, you know, I'd rather be buying all the farms that join me, but we're not in a financial position to do that.
Any further public comment? Moving second to close the hearing, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Ward's desire.
Mr. Chairman, I'll save it.
Moving second to further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is very difficult for me. I may sound a little hypocritical later today. I believe this is a little bit slightly different development here in the old forest subdivision. We've mentioned before, farmers are land rich and we're land rich.
Land rich, money poor.
And families that have homesteaded and farmed their whole life, I believe need to be kind of a bit of slack as to when it comes time for the fire, if you don't have kids and want to take over and farm and continue, and I feel that so. I support Mr. Carter's plan here for hopefully retirement.
And I, I mean, I echo your concerns, and I also, you know, you note that there's also an eighty-eight acre parcel that's remaining. I'm fairly familiar with the property. I used to be a neighbor of Mr. Carter's, and, you know, a couple of lots are marginal, and it's really difficult to deliver water to them the way they need to be delivered to be, you know, good productive land. And so, you know, again, it's tough to see some of this stuff cut up and sold, but to deny Mr. Carter the ability to move forward is also a pretty tough choice, so those are my comments.
Chairman, I got one question. You know, with this card response to Commissioner Teel's question, with very apropos to everything we're going to be doing today, and I think you get the nail on the head. People have private property rights, they should have the right ability to get the best amount of possible out of their land.
Okay. All right, moving second to further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Most carries. Thank Mr. Carter. Thank you for the attendance. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is the public hearing for the construction special use permit number two, eighteen with site plan review. Sure.
So I can issue the special use permit, stacky, or some of these places.
Oh, okay.
The reports will go back to stacky.
Sounds good to me. No worries. Okay. Hello, Joy.
Hi. I'll go pretty quickly for this. So as you know, we have a special use permit two nineteen for mountain construction. This has been a special use application for plan or site plan review for a major commercial business. Use classification is major commercial business. It is for office uses with building sizes of more than five thousand square feet, larger area, more than one acre land, associated with the use. The Park County Wyoming two thousand fifteen development standards and regulations apply. This property is owned by Four F's LLC, a Wyoming limited liability company. This particular parcel of land is partially a corn mile east of the city of Powell, immediately east of the target Powell Valley subdivision and north of County Lane Nine on a vacant parcel of land. You can see this property in figure one. It is in transitional zoning district, which means that upon proposal of the use, this land shall be zoned to whatever you desire. This particular land is adjacent to commercial zoning, and we certainly propose that it would continue along the lines and stay as corporate property. And we ask that as part of your approval, should you approve this S U P that you state for the record that whatever zoning district that you wish to change this land to at that time. Major commercial businesses are permitted in commercial zoning district provided a special use permit is approved. You can see a map of the zoning districts in figure two, sort of gives you a sense for where commercial, transitional, and industrial are nearby, and of course, directly to the west is the city of Powell. We have some graphics for you, a site plan drawing showing the placement of the plant structure, any roads or other infrastructure. There's a truckload drawing, in particular, this will become important for the next S U P, that mountain construction will be having built today for the batch plants to the south. We also have snowstorm drawing, as you know, and right to proposed or any accesses, it's important to know where snow might go, especially for a site like this where they might have to clear footed snow during the snow then. Neighboring land uses are shown in figure six. Nearby, we have primarily commercial and industrial development. There are some agricultural uses nearby and a residential use located to the south. This particular site again is vacant, and it slopes gently from southwest to the northeast. We provided topographic map for your. We provided topographic map for your review as well. Legal notices were sent out, notice of public hearing was sent out twice to the Pell Tribune. Uh, neighbor notices were sent out in according with regulations. We did notify several agencies of this particular use. Um, anyone who felt was relevant or should know about this. Public Works responded on numerous occasions. Bottom line is that they um agree with this use. They um have reviewed drainage and erosion control report. And have approved that. Uh, they approved the access to this particular use, indicating that a right-of-way permit will be needed for new access to the county road um system. A geotechnical study was submitted and they reviewed that and approved that as well and hope that the recommendations in that geotechnical report are incorporated in and followed as part of this um use being developed. Montana Dakota Utilities indicated that they have the capability to serve the lots in this particular. So at first they thought it was facing Porshu, but then they corrected it to state that they had served natural gas to this property. Garland Light and Power said they have the capacity to provide electricity to this use. The rural water district indicated that they have their permits because they um are going to be using onsite wells. The treasurer indicated that property taxes will be in full. Our county fire protection districts can provide fire protection as long as any all access were constructed to accommodate their equipment. Why dot state that they have their concerns with this application, meaning fish has no wildlife comments regarding this permit. Our county meeting test stated that a long-term noxious weed management plan will not be required. However, they recommend that best management practices for controlling the spread of noxious weeds be followed. Shishone Irrigation District has responded. They have um reviewed the water distribution plan. Um, they did indicate there needs to be a fifty-foot easement identified on the plan for underground drain that runs along the southeast portion of the lot. The city of Powell responded that the site layout does not seem to pose any issues when measured at city codes and requirements. The Wyoming State Fire Marshal indicated that this new construction of an office storage building over five thousand square feet uh will be accessible to publicly. The applicant is required to submit a site for a plan review. To them in order to obtain a permit to construct. Powell Parks for Conservation District did not respond and T C T West did not respond. We have no public comments at this time. Planning and zoning commission reviewed this application on July twenty-first. They approved with conditions, uh, those conditions of um water distribution plan met. Uh, the geotechnical investigation was met. Public Works' response was met. Um, the rest uh plan review for the Wyoming State Fire Marshal, uh, of course, that's not met, but they will have to obviously achieve that prior to um starting its use. Approval standards, as you know, you must address four things. The first thing is that there is a full statement in here from the the applicant as to how this use is compatible. I'm I'm not going to read that verbatim. Um, in essence, they basically are saying that their operations will run Monday to Friday, seven to five, with occasional longer workdays, occasional weekend work, and on rare occasions, working at night during the summer. Um, they talk about the size of the proposed shop, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty square feet. They will have parking. There's plenty of room for parking. They they have, however, asked for a fifty percent reduction in our required parking because there won't be people coming. It's mostly just their shop for their use. They will have two equipment storage structures as well. Um, one is six thousand three hundred square feet and the second is ten thousand five hundred and sixty. They are proposing to install landscaping and a new sign. That sign will require a permit. And they are working with the N S F to ensure that they can put that uh sign in that proposed right-of-way. Building setbacks have been met. Their covenants are proposed. After lighting is proposed to be down shielded LED lighting. There are no non-conformities on this property and nuisances have been reported. Uh, the applicant provided a web soil survey from the Resource Conservation Service, but more importantly, they have done a geotechnical report. And uh, there are recommendations within and staff have recommended that they would follow those recommendations. Um, services and infrastructure, of course, we've addressed access of public works. They will be able to have an approach, just to make sure it's permitted. Domestic water, um, they are proposing onsite wells. Uh, there was a water well sample collected from a nearby well that serves the office on East of Porshu. Um, did find no total color form of any koolai. Uh, nitrates were detected above the maximum contaminant level. Lead was detected below the maximum contaminant level. Um, they are aware that the water is not ideal. They are willing to treat the water as needed. Um, this use is in the Shishone Irrigation District. Again, they mentioned there are water rights on the site, eighteen point nine four acres. They plan to retain these water rights. Um, and the existing lease issues will be filled in or modified to retain more open space on the site. They're going to work with that district directly um to ensure that. They're meeting the state of requirement requirements. Again, we addressed parking. There's that parking. They're asking for fifty percent reduction. Um, an additional proposed small wastewater system will serve the business, will be designed to meet our requirements. They did perp tests. Perp rates were great, twenty, twenty, and forty. Um, and they did not find groundwater to a depth of eight feet. Uh, looks like conventional systems will be fine. Electricity will provide by Garland. Natural gas available at Montana Dakota Utilities. And no responses received from T C T S. Again, they proposed a sign. Um, solid waste can be disposed of by private company. There are no specific criteria for this use. It is not an overlay district. Um, site plan reviews are required. A lot of these requirements are duplicates of previous things, so I'll just cover items that have not been covered so far. No hazardous substances will be produced or handled on site. Um, there's uh utilities, obviously, we already talked about those, signs, parking, um. Wetlands, this use is not expected to impact any federally protected wetlands. One of the erosion control has been addressed by public works. Air quality. This standard applies, however, the current use is not expected to impact air quality. No nuisances have been reported. They will have to follow the outdoor lighting standards. Um, again, we're not mineralite district. We're not specific use. Um, building setbacks are met and otherwise, I would just like to remind you that this property needs to be zoned. As part of your decision, so please remember to state, yeah, the property will need to be zoned as a part of the approval of this use. So if you could please state. That you either approve or recommend some other zoning than commercial, please save that on the record as part of your approval. Um, otherwise, we presented you a summary of the findings. We provided several pictures and we have several conditions recommended. We are recommending approval. Of course, the Park County Noise Lighting and Other Nuisance Regulations shall apply. They shall submit an approved water distribution plan. You know, again. We haven't seen the actual approved water distribution plan, but um we haven't also received any responses from Trent, so I know they've been having trouble um with illness. The geotech report um shall be referenced in the construction plans. They shall comply with the drainage and erosion plan that was approved by the part of the. Public Works. They shall comply with the conditions of prepared meeting test and shall comply with all requirements of state fire marshal in addition to otherwise complying with our standards. Any other questions?
Any questions for staff? Public hearing. Yeah, any public comments? Second, move second to close the public hearing. Further discussion, others in favor? Those carries.
And resolution of the.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just surprised that uh that the mountain isn't here, but I understand that Mr. Morris could be here due to a death in the family yesterday, so. Couldn't be here.
Well, yeah, my comment is, I've, I've, we've had a, you know, mountain construction, we have a good relationship with it through the county. They're a good business. And it's kind of nice to see him want to put a bigger footprint here and. Be part of the community, so that's my comment.
Switch to. My question is that, so if we choose to make a motion to approve the special use permit. In conjunction with that, we request zoning change from transitional to commercial, because that's recommendation of the commercial, correct?
Yes.
P and Z.
Yes.
So Mr. Chairman, I so make that motion uh to approve special use permit two nineteen ground construction, the site plan review. Yeah, along with uh changing zoning from transitional to commercial.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Further discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Those carries.
I'm proud of you, boy. Thank you.
Well, you know, we're coachable.
Our resolution of the.
Oh. Like previous three need a.
So you gave me.
I'll get, I'll get two with. We got, we got B team in here. Just kind of get this.
I know, me too. It's all good. We're doing great, so.
All right, well, since we're on the public hearing marathon. I've opened up the public hearing for mountain concrete special use permit two twenty with site plan review.
All right, so again, I have a specially, I have a special use uh permit application for mountain concrete. This is the owner four F's LLC, same as the mountain construction application. Um, they are seeking approval to have a major industrial use on this property. The application of the applicable regulations of Park County Wyoming two thousand fifteen development standards and regulations, ownership has confirmed that it's four F's LLC, a Wyoming liability, limited liability company. Uh, this particular property is located four miles east of the city of Powell, immediately east of the target Powell Valley subdivision, north of County Lane nine. This is on the southern portion of the property. It's just reviewed for the mountain construction shot building. This zoning district is transitional, however, you just changed it to commercial, so you can ignore all of that. Now we're on the commercial zoning. We can ignore half of that information. Uh, thank you for taking that approval. Same images you saw in the last staff report for site plan for this particular batch plant use. Um, there's also a truck flow drawing. It's important to know how traffic will be moving through this property. And of course, snow uh storage is important as well due to the size of this um particular use. Neighboring land uses, again, uh primarily commercial and industrial to the west, immediately surrounding to the northeast and south are ag and then one residential uses directly to the south. This property is currently vacant. Um, and you can see that it's very gently sloping from the topography of photograph and map we provided. Legal notices, we have um published notice of public hearing as required in Pell Tribune. We've also notified neighbors of all properties within six hundred and sixty feet of this particular application. We notified relevant agencies. Park County Public Works has responded. They've reviewed this application. They don't have any concerns with um access. They will need to have a. A discussion with them whether they want to keep their primary access on Hastings Porshu, because you could also enter this property from that site, but they would recommend that they come off the county lane instead. Um, some water drainage, again, they reviewed the drainage and erosion control report for this particular property. They have no concerns. Uh, there was a geotech, that geotech doesn't actually apply to this particular property, uh, this particular project because there's no water structures proposed. Um, and. That's it for public works. Montana Dakota Utilities, um, has natural gas to serve this use. Garland Light and Power can serve this use. Northwest rural water district is not proposed because of onsite wells. Our county treasurer stated the taxes are paid. Our county fire district number one can provide fire protections along the onsite to give their equipment into the property. Why dot has no concerns. Game of Fish has no wildlife comments. Shishone Irrigation District has reviewed. Um, they stated that they need a fifty-foot easement um on the plan. We did not receive the approval of the water distribution plan as of yet. Geoscience conducted a geotechnical investigation, again, that doesn't apply to this particular project because there's um nothing large being shredded. Our county meeting test stated that they would like best management practices for controlling sort of noxious weeds to be followed. City of Powell said they don't have any concerns about this. Wyoming State Fire Marshal has not responded. Powell Parks for Conservation District did not respond, nor is it required. And T C T West did not respond. No public comments have been received. The planning and zoning commission reviewed this application on July twenty-first. They had conditions. Several of those conditions have been met, including the water distribution plan. Well, it it's not been met. We've had some response, but not one specifically approving that. Um, public works did provide their approval. And of course, they need to comply with best management practices from meeting test. Um, approval standards, we talk about compatibility and impacts. The applicant did make a statement of compatibility. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I will summarize. Um, they do plan to have a batch plant for mountain concrete. It will operate from six A M to six P M. The batch plant will likely run, likely run extended average during the weekend, on weekends during the summer, and occasional nighttime operations during the summer. The proposed use is not within twenty feet of a county road right-of-way. No covenants are proposed. They proposed down shielded LED lighting. They have no non-conformities known. No nuisances have been reported. The soil conservation district did not respond, however, the applicant provided a web soil survey from uh N R C S. Um, it is well-draining soil, gentle slopes, not limited to blinding or small commercial buildings. Services and infrastructure, um, I'm basically just going to summarize, seeing that adequate services and infrastructure available to serve this use, everything from solid waste. Utilities, sewer, uh irrigation district addressing, domestic water access and parking have all been addressed. Um, there's really not a big need for parking on this particular property since trucks will be coming in and out. Um, they they will have a septic system or a bathroom at the at the batch plant, so that should be sufficient for conventional system. No specific criteria identified for this use. It's not located in an overlay district. Site plan review is required based upon the size of this use. Many of the site plan review requirements are duplicates of what we already addressed. Domestic water, um, we're going to be using well, sewage is already been addressed, adequate. Um, solid waste can be disposed of properly. No hazardous substances will be produced, handled, or stored on the site. Um, they do need to have, they have utility easement along the far west to support their um underground power telecommunications, natural gas. Um, signs are proposed and have already been addressed. Um, if they're going to put one in B N S S right-of-way, they will need B N S S um approval. Parking is not really proposed or necessary, but adequate space does exist. Um, roads and access have been addressed by public works. They will need a right-of-way permit for that. Um, fire district has responded that they can support. Irrigation district has started to review. We do not have water um or irrigation district official plan approval. Um, we don't believe any lakes, reservoirs, or streams will be impacted by this or wetlands. Run-up and erosion control are addressed by public works. Um, we believe they've met the site plan standards. Again, we no longer need to worry about the zoning on this property because you just approved commercial zoning in the previous S U P. And so, um, no special site plan standards uh applying to this particular use. We've summarized the findings for you, provided some photographs of the property, and then they'll go and answer any of your questions.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I got a quick slide. Do you have anything in there concerning just maybe?
You know, they have to, they have to comply with air quality standards, and if I remember, let me just check. I probably see. I know they had been talking with um C Q about air quality permit, but I remember. Yeah, so the proposed concrete plan is committed under uh Wyoming C Q air quality permit and that statement does apply.
I just have a question in regards to the hours that you listed. Six to six sounds pretty reasonable, but then they said nights and summertime. There is a residence just south of this and of course, some offices to the west, but just is there any control on that or is that a?
Do you absolutely think this should be always this use if you feel that's necessary?
I guess I just don't know. I don't know how much traffic, I don't know how much noise it's going to produce, so right now, that's a question.
Right, and I think um that would be a seasonal consideration too. There's going to be certain times of the year when that volume will be greater than others, my understanding.
No, I understand. I understand where you're going with this and I. I guess it's, it's a concern to try and. Address it now, not knowing what it is. That's what I'm getting at. I mean, I know what a concrete what it sounds like, uh, but uh.
Can we address it later?
That'd be a good question for.
Well, anything that becomes a nuisance can be addressed, right? So um, but the question is, you know, you know the type of. Of business that this is and that it does produce noise and traffic. Um, if you're concerned that there may be too much for too many days, you certainly could state the days that they can operate, the hours that they can operate, you know, it's. And it's been done before. There, these conditions have been imposed on other, other users.
True. Um, in in reference to the residence just to the, to the south. I mean, look at figure two, um, that is, there's an I in there. Is that a wrong, is, should that not, but it's colored transitional. I mean, is that. Uh, supposed to be industrial?
It looks like there's a small industrial.
And that is, that particular rectangle is that residence, so I mean, I can't see where they would have. A concern or shouldn't have if they're already someone that that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what it's used since there, maybe they have a permit or something. I'm I'm not sure. I don't have that information. We could, we could look it up if you really wanted to know.
Yeah, I understand.
With that, with that property with notice about this.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I, like I said, I don't know what is on that property.
Yeah, I understand the reason the applicant can't be here. Yeah, I understand the reason the applicant can't be here, it's just. I mean, I, I know they're, they're proposing several business hours for a plant. It's kind of, yeah, ask the public input if we have any public input.
Um, Steve Christians, and, uh, sorry, just, I steer with Steve Christians. Oh, hey, Steve, okay. Okay, my parents, uh, that used to be my parents' house, and now it's belonged to, uh, Brando's. And he is, uh, a stuff over there.
Right.
And, uh, so, that's what I can tell you about.
That's later, I just, I just developed, we can go back and address it if it turns out to be an issue.
Which may, um, being from the city of Powell, the gravel, that's that place, it's on South Street. There's, um, I don't know if they issue certain times, but they usually do shut down by six o'clock, but they're only a quarter block away from residential that are on North Street. So, um, I suppose sometimes there's effects to a plant like that, sort of puts you to sleep at night. Hard time going to sleep, but you know, you have the problem, so I don't know. It doesn't seem to be a problem with what's inside City of Powell, but I don't know if they do ever shut down, so. Any further public comment?
Oh, yeah, well, I would just, um, Steve Christians, I'm new. Um, I'd just like to say, you know, uh, like Scott said, there's a plant downtown and it's a fairly big property and there shouldn't really be any problem. I, I think it's really great that we have companies that pay taxes and employ people and help with the infrastructure as well.
I just want to add that, uh, it's true, less than a quarter mile, we also have the fire hall that, uh, the hall owners are nice, would run out of, uh, truck sirens, so. Already in the noise there.
So it's been moved in second to close public hearing, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll see you, I'll see you move. Thank you. Oh, it's active, thank you. Okay, so, what's desired?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special use permit two twenty, uh, for mountain concrete.
Thank you. Moving second and further discussion. President, do you?
Do we have to rezoom?
Nope, nope.
What is, we rezoned as commercial under that, but if this is major industrial, are they allowed to do everything they need to?
Yes, within a, yeah, yeah, this is.
Because it could be, this lower portion could be rezoned.
Yeah, we are, we are to confirm that. Okay, yes.
Okay. Moving second and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in public carry. Great. That one's sixty two.
The other one's sixty.
The other one's sixty five. Blue sage is sixty. Home group go up fifty nine. Just make sure you sign that one first. Thank you. I, but well, I'm, they had to entertain a motion. I'm gonna pick a button for it. See, is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, you go into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Is during the motion, we're going to take a decision.
Yeah. It seems like it might be a law that's not one that's going to duck out.
Okay. Sorry, not September.
It's. Careful, we know the public hearing on Adeline or Adeline or Adeline might say Adeline to state minor subdivision sketch plan review fifty five.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The project before you is the Adeline Estates Minor Subdivision number fifty five. An application was received from every kind of above in the Wyoming corporation just enjoying as president on June fourth of two thousand and twenty one, including payment proposed use sketch plan notes of intent subdivision with other supporting documents. The applicant requests approval for a sketch plan for a five lot subdivision. Uh, we just got a new sketch plan this morning. Those lot sizes have changed and are now proposed to be one twenty eight point two eight acre lot, one three acre lot and three one point six eight acre lots. Again, owner is every kind of above in the Wyoming corporation. The proposed subdivision is located approximately six point five miles northeast of Cody and approximately point seven nine miles west of U.S. Highway fourteen eight. Uh, subdivision is just west of County Road twenty. This subdivision is located in the general rural five acre PR five zoning district. The applicant requests lot size averaging to create lots smaller than five acres. No lots or parcels shall be created smaller than the special minimum lot size. And the average lot size of all lots or parcels created shall equal or exceed the minimum lot size for the zoning district in which the lots are located as seen in figure three. The average lot size for the proposed subdivision is approximately seven point two seven acres. Further subdivision of the tract of record is possible so long as no more than seven lots total are created and all other regulatory requirements are met. And Kim's going to elaborate a little bit more later on the lot size averaging. Uh, minimum lot size in GR five is a smallest total land area within the lot lines of a lot that is permitted within a conventional subdivision or conventional exempt land division. The minimum lot size in GR five is five acres. The special minimum lot size is the total, the smallest total land area within the lots, lot lines of a lot that is permitted within the lot size averaged subdivision or exempt division or within a grouped lot subdivision. The special minimum lot size in GR five is one acre. The lot sizes proposed need this requirement using lot size averaging. Neighbor uses directly north of the bound- of boundary of the proposed subdivision are residential and land uses directly bordering. The west, south and east boundary are agricultural uses. There is a dog and cat kennel operating under special use permit one twenty six to the southeast of this property. Property is relatively level with a gentle slope from the southwest and northeast and is vacant primarily irrigated crop land. This property is not located within one mile of municipality, so review is not required. Notice of intent was published on May thirteenth and May twenty of two thousand and twenty one in the Cody enterprise. The public notice, uh, public hearing that the. A public notice, a public hearing that the planning department published in the Cody Enterprises July twenty ninth and August tenth of this year. And the staff report was sent to the applicant and the board of commissioners prior to this public hearing. Agency referrals have all been sent out and their responses from the relevant agencies are listed below. As you'll see in there, there was a lot of conversation with Public Works about access and everything on that and those changes have been reflected on this new sketch plan we just got today. We have received a total of nine public comments, one of those being what we received today. And they've been received expressing concerns about the lot sizes being below five acres in a GR five zoning district. Additional concerns include an effects on groundwater and potential impacts from new septic systems. Several members of the public shared concerns about this subdivision at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on the sketch plan in July. The July meeting minutes have not been approved, however, the recording of the hearing is available in the Planning and Zoning Department and includes public testimony. A pre-application meeting was had on April twentieth where the applicant, Justin Joy, Pete DePella and the planning department were present. The supporting documents for the application, such as the title report was included. There are two new roads proposed for the subdivision. One will be along the north end of lots two, three and two, three, four and five to provide access to lots one and two. And the second will be along the south end of proposed lots four and five to provide access to lots three and four. Lot five will have access directly from County Road twenty. Solid waste disposal is available. Fire protection is available by Park County Fire District number two. Mail delivery is available, school bus is available, transportation. There are no known landslides, rock balls or hazards features known to exist on the property. She have received a soils report from the Cody Conservation District. Heart Mountain Irrigation District has been contacted. A long-term noxious weed management plan will be required and received. A subsurface evaluation has been completed and the percolation tests were completed by the applicants on proposed lots two, three and four on May fifteenth. The perk rate suggests conventional septic systems will likely be sufficient should this subdivision be approved and septic systems proposed. Excavation cuts made to a depth of ten plus feet on proposed lots two, three and four revealed no impermeable layers or groundwater. Adequate separation distance has been determined. The sketch plan does show the locations of the perk tests. Small wastewater administrator stated conventional septic systems will likely be sufficient should this subdivision be approved and development occur. Domestic water will be provided by private wells to be permitted and approved by the State of Wyoming Engineers Office. Well, water sample has been collected from a well located at one thirty nine road ten in Cody on May four of two thousand and twenty one. The sample test concluded the results failed to meet the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements because coliform bacteria were detected. Nitrogen was detected at six point seven six milligrams per liter, which is well below the maximum contaminant level of ten. So coliform was detected, totally solid reported at five hundred and sixty two milligrams per liter, which is above the maximum contaminant level of five hundred. However, TDS is a contaminant, is a contaminant regulated by the National Secondary Drinking Water Standards and these standards are bound binding guidelines regulating contaminants that may cause cosmetic or aesthetic effects in drinking water. Agricultural impacts, there will be a reduction in land available for agricultural use upon the development of the proposed subdivision lots. The applicants will be required to comply with the recommendations of the county weed pest regarding the control of weeds. Their residential development plan for the subdivision is not expected to introduce pest or litter problems for domestic pet disturbances to livestock. The applicants are required to maintain irrigation facilities according to the irrigation district rules. The applicant has not proposed any changes that would be expected to adversely impact existing agricultural activities or related uses. Heart Mountain Irrigation District has been contacted and a water distribution plan submitted to them, but we have not received an approved water distribution plan as of yet. No stream river pass within or adjacent to the proposed subdivision lots. A subdivision retaining all water rights with no change of use are exempt from state review, therefore no state review is required for this one. Garland Light and Power has the capacity to provide electric service to the proposed five lots. Black Hills Energy currently has gas service available to provide gas service to this proposed five lot subdivision. No response has been received from TCT or Century Link. The applicant will be required to extend utilities to each lot. A subdivision improvements agreement will be required to address these improvements. Design improvements, minor subdivision need not submit a home roof agreement unless there are shared or common facilities. Two shared accesses are proposed as part of this development, so that standard does apply. This subdivision is not located in any overlay district. Planning and zoning commission reviewed. The sketch plan on July twenty first, two thousand and twenty one recommended approval with conditions. Most conditions, most items that are conditioned are required for final plat review. They did want to have a response from Century Link for this hearing, we have not received that. And the requirement or the condition for long-term noxious feed isn't required until final plat review. So the standards of approval. We have our staff findings, Kim's going to talk some more on the lot size averaging and the changes to the plat.
Yes, so first, Mr. Chairman, we gave you all the new sketch plan we just received. So I just wanted to highlight those changes and the first change is on the east side of the subdivision, lot five, there's an access into lot five. This new sketch plan compared with the old one that's in your packet, that access has been moved to the north. That is my understanding, it was recommended by Public Works. Two other changes, the easement to the north that was forty feet in your packet, that has been increased to sixty. Again, Public Works recommendation. The southern easement in your packet is twenty feet, it's now on the new sketch plan, again a Public Works recommendation. As Patty said, lot one has not changed in size, lot two has gotten a little bit bigger, lots three, four and five have gotten a little bit smaller. The lot line between lot, proposed lot two and three has been made a right angle. The other, the lot angle or the lot lines between three, four and four and five have moved a little bit because those lot sizes have changed. Those are the changes to the sketch plan. So again, we feel, we feel like they're very minor. I just want to say a couple things about lot size averaging. In this case, what lot size averaging has allowed Mr. Joy to do is, is to make lot one relatively large and he's told us that at least in the near future, he would like to keep that in ag production. And then it's allowed him to concentrate smaller lots over lots two, three, four and five to the east, allow those to be concentrated, you might argue it's a benefit to maybe come concentrate infrastructure utilities. One more thing, you know, this is just over thirty, this is just over thirty six acre parcel, so seven lots could have been created, but Mr. Joy's record is proposing five lots.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just read the conditions recommended by staff group. Number one, we have the standard language for easements that need to be identified on the final plat. The applicant must comply with the recommendations of Park County Public Works. The applicant shall provide a water analysis results revealing safe drinking water quality prior to final plat review by the county commissioners. Excuse me, or a note shall be placed on the plat stating that the water test analysis was conducted and revealed the presence of coliform. Applicant shall provide an approved long-term noxious weed management plan prior to final plat review by the commissioners. Applicant shall provide a review and recommendation from Heart Mountain Irrigation District regarding the water distribution plan prior to final plat with county commissioners. Applicant shall submit the planning and zoning draft subdivision improvements agreement prior to final plat review by the board of commissioners and shall not commence a physical layout or construction of the subdivision prior to board approval. The final plat shall contain a notice of the Wyoming Right Department Land Act of nineteen ninety one and shall otherwise comply with the standards of Park County regulations.
Another question, Patty, when you read about the water sample that was taken, you said it was taken at one thirty nine road ten? That seems like a long way to wait.
Yeah, that was one thirty nine road twenty.
Oh, thank you. I wondered that. I'll fix that, thank you.
Any questions for staff? Board at this time. It's a public hearing, any public comments? Quite a few that we've read in that have been recorded into the record. If there's any public comments.
Commissioner Tyler Wettler, Heart Mountain Irrigation District. We're currently under water district, water district plan review. We received an initial plan on the tenth, we replied on the eleventh. And we have a schedule for next Heart Mountain Commission, board of commissioners review for that water distribution plan, so we're working with them right now.
Further public comment? Yeah.
Pete DePella.
Go ahead and stand up. Pete DePella, I'm the representative of Adeline States. And I just wrote down a couple things, those resolutions from the planning and zoning staff on last meeting. We did receive a script of lead plan from Mary. And then as far as Century Link, I have reached out to Century Link, they're working on a, on a letter. I apologize, I did not receive that letter prior to this meeting, but my contact I was working with apparently is no longer works with Century Link. So I'm onto a new person and they're going to draft up a letter for me and I'll get it, get it just as soon as I can. I think that's all I have here now. Okay, thank you.
Just a question on, on the design. It's unusual to see subdivision lots that have two accesses on them or two utilities, one on the north and one on the south. Is there a reason or?
Sure. Yeah, we're just trying to minimize traffic of having too many accesses on one, one access. Not to mention that if you have one driveway that provides access to multiple lots, I think two is the magic number, I think three and above, it has to be an engineered road, which we were trying to avoid, you know, the cost to that. But additionally, Mr. Joy, the owner, who remains to keep lot one, is agricultural property and land for his own. He wanted a dedicated easement for that that was much bigger, that's why we made it to sixty for farm utility equipment, everything else, and didn't feel that that should probably be an access for the residential of the other three, four and five, lots three, four and five. Those are the biggest factors.
Further public comment?
I don't know, my dad is, my name's Heath Streeter. I live at one sixty five, or my parents live at one sixty five, which is ordering this property. I don't know if you got, if the record, if that letter that my dad had me send was put on the record or not? Okay, it is, he asked me to read it, is that okay?
Hi, it's, it's okay if you want to, it's up to the rest of the board, we've, we've heard it, but go ahead and, and read if you'd like.
Okay, he just states I'm out of town or I would have appeared in person. We built our home at one sixty five road twenty almost forty years ago. When we built it, we did not build on farm ground, we did not crowd anyone, did not threaten anyone's well with our new well. We did not threaten anyone's property with our new septic system. You're proposing two acre lots, four of which will be right against our property line. You're taking over thirty acres of good farmland out of production. There's unfarmed ground all over this county where houses could be built. There's no plausible explanation for this subdivision at this place at this time, with much trepidation, John Streeter. I also would like to make comment. I, I have concerns about the five acre lot limits. There's, there's not any other areas up there in that area that have lots this small. And I think that will set a precedent for this to continue to happen on farm ground that's around there. That's a, that's a concern I have, also a concern for what happens to the other wells around there. I've also visited with the farmers that currently farm that ground and they tell me that the plausibility of continuing to farm lot number one is not very plausible because of some of the way the water flows there. So that does take potentially all of this out of farm production. So that is my concerns.
But we're running up against a timeline here. Do we have any further public comment?
My name is Marge Buckhols and I also wrote a letter addressing the concerns that we have, our property is directly across from the proposed subdivision. In reading the article in the paper last Thursday about the Bucks Flat, I believe it's called subdivision that is going in up above, I am very concerned of what is going on in Park County and what has been going on in Park County, not only for farming, it is an agricultural area where we are. The Bucks Flat is not directly in my purview, but there will be another subdivision. I would urge all of you on planning and zoning and the county commissioners with water concerns especially, we are in a desert here, semi-desert. Going forward in a year like this, when you have drought, not only here but everywhere else, crops failing, people coming, as one man wrote in their comment, well, everybody wants a little piece of paradise. But I urge you, think about, there won't be any piece of paradise for anybody if this continues at this rate. So I'm here today to just say, think carefully, please. We all treasure what we have. Wyoming is different, thank God, and how they think. And I hope it continues like that. So all the concerns that everybody's mentioned, I do feel too. My husband could not be here because he is ill, has been ill, but he was a farmer since day one when they bought the place or got the place as a homesteader and treasures it and values it as I do and my son does and everybody out there does. So I say I would urge careful consideration in what we are doing to our county going forward and to the state of Wyoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge, appreciate it, good seeing you. Oh, this is a public hearing and we run out of time, what's, what's the desire of what, will it continue public hearing? This is a pretty sensitive, major decision.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we do this, any appropriate hearing.
Okay, well, we have two dates and times in front of us. One is on September seventh at nine thirty five AM or the other is on September twenty first at nine forty five AM, so what is your motion? What would your motion?
I'm going to go on September twenty first.
I know you would.
You're not going to be here on September. I think I, I'd like a little more time to look at some of the.
And we could also take more public comments, so it's been moved to continue this public hearing to nine, September twenty first, nine forty five AM to air second.
Second.
Been moved to second to continue the public hearing. Further discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, we want to make sure that this gets every consideration that needs moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to mention those of you that are here that are concerned about things you're going with Park County, that we are going to, we are putting out an RFP to redo our land use plan, it's twenty two years old. We need everybody's input, so when you see the ads and we're looking for people on those committees for your service area, area where you live, your, your area community, please join those committees.
How soon is that going to be?
We're just getting the RFP out now, so we probably won't have a consult on board till I'd say the end of September, first part of October, somewhere in there, maybe.
Yeah, that's wishful, thank you, but later this year we're going to.
Thank you.
We'll have that in the paper.
As far as that's concerned, with the current land use plan, I mean, there is, with the current land use plan, there's, there's vergige in there to, to protect this, this farm ground and, and so I would hope that in your considerations, you, you, you look at that.
And then absolutely what I've done with this, it's left twenty eight acres to form.
Okay, well, this, this public hearing is going to continue, so come back with, with the rest of your comments and on September twenty first. Thanks for everybody for coming up. Next on the agenda, and you don't get to go anywhere, mine is you, Patty, we have the discussion on the Diamond KMS forty nine final plat review.
The document for you, the Diamond K Minor Subdivision forty nine final plat review, final plat application for. Final plot application for this subdivision. Including payment and final plat will receive August second, twenty-twenty-one revised. Final plat was received August tenth. The applicant requests approval for a four lot subdivision comprised of one three-point-four-five acre lot, two three acre lots, and one three-point-zero-one acre lot. The intended use for all lots is residential. The owner of the property is Kenny and Marion Wright, trustees of the Wright Family Trust. This subdivision is located approximately five-point-two-five miles southwest of Rolston. Approximately one-point-two miles southeast of highway fourteen A on the north side of county main fifteen. This proposed subdivision is located in the GRP zoning districts. And the lot size of proposed are consistent with GRP zoning district. Land use surrounding this parcel are a mixture of residential, residential development, and agricultural, and example. In this four review is not required as this proposed subdivision is not within one mile of municipality. A public hearing is not required for final plat review by the county commissioners and no other notices are required. No new public comments have been received since the sketch plan hearing before the board in May. County Commissioners reviewed the sketch plan on this subdivision on May eighteenth. And approved the sketch plan with conditions, and all of those conditions have been met. The plat review committee for the county reviewed the initial submission of the final plat and submitted comments electronically on August ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Those corrections and changes to the final plat were identified and a corrected version was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department on August tenth. Submissions for the final plat review, requirements for that have been met. A subdivision improvements agreement is not required for this subdivision. And we have a summary of our findings for your review. And staff recommendation is, we recommend approval of the final plat of Diamond K Minor Subdivision with the following condition. That condition is applicant shall otherwise comply with the standards of Park County Development Standards. And the minimum subdivision requirements as set forth in Wyoming statute eighteen-five-three oh six.
Further hearing, do you have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, although we approve the Diamond K final plat.
Second.
Moving to seconded, further discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Further comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank both of you. We'll start back on schedule. Diamond K, resolution number sixteen. We are going to discuss pending vacation. Road sixty AM, road fifty-four B, and road fifty-four. Looks like most of the players in the room have a pretty good idea of the history of this. But we've been working on it for quite some time with the bridge of six-on-six JDM. And getting things cleared, cleared up on getting rid of the bridge, getting rid of the road. So, kind of engineer Brian Edwards, wanna bring us up to speed on where we're at?
I will do my best. So as you know, this sixty AM, fifty-four, fifty-four B has been a longstanding issue. They back before my time with the county, I think. For all of our time. Yeah, there's been a long time, so. Back in two thousand fifteen, the county petition to vacate sixty AM. Went through the process, got to the point, had some claims for damages. The process was halted, withdrawn, statute of process. And it never was picked back up. Then in two thousand seventeen, petitions were submitted for private landowners, two different petitions. One was, you know, through the properties, T E Ranch. The other was through the Hawks Hill Ranch parcel, had several petitioners. Both petitions, I believe. But anyway, same thing, we got to a certain point in the process. Received claims for damages and the commissioners, this, this has been through eighteen, early nineteen. We got so far through the process, which is a public notice, received the claims for damages. The next point was to assign appraisers. I think the amount of damages at that point, the commissioners elected to continue that process. And so no actions were taken and put. So there's been a lot of back and forth communication, I think, with the parties and the, the interested, you know, petitioners on, on that group. You know, most of it, I think at the attorney level between, you know, county attorney's office and the attorneys representing the two large landowners out there. It's my understanding that they would face progress on issues related to the ditch company. And having, having some sort of access reserved for the ditch company. Well, if it's not reserved by right, that, that either party, I think, is not concerned with that now. I think they've got that worked out. And then, and then it's also my understanding that, that there. The parties that submitted claims for damages, they at this time be willing to withdraw those claims for damages. But I don't have all the details in chat speak for that. But I think that's why we're here today is maybe there's a renewed opportunity to continue that process. And hopefully put it to bed. So that's all I really know.
That's a very, that's a very good explanation, appreciate it, Brian. You know, it's my understanding, we did have three, three claims for damages. We have one from Ox Hill, one from Mr. Bustos, one from the irrigation company up there. And once we receive, and it seems like those are forthcoming, potentially forthcoming, once we receive notification that those claims for damages have been withdrawn. Then we can move forward with the vacation process. If claims for damages stay, then at that point, we have to decide if we're gonna appoint appraisers and viewers and, and proceed with, with vacation now. So that's, that's my understanding where we're at on it. And if, if we can receive letters and confirmation that those claims for damages have been withdrawn, I think gives us a green light moving forward. Also, there is, there is the issue, and it was brought up last time when we, when we talked about this. And also when we decided to reopen this, there's a state land parcel that would be, that's on the T E, surrounded by the T E. It's my understanding, the county, county and, and has talked with T E about the potential of a land swap with state lands. There's a, there's, Carter Mountain is a very popular destination for recreators, hunters, et cetera. There's a lot of public trailhead there. The T E to, to this date has allowed people to park on their, on their property and offload their either horseback or ATBs. It's our understanding that if we can move forward with this, that they would be entering into negotiations or attempting to enter into negotiations with state land. About a state land swap, being able to create a, a public trailhead there. Is that still the, I see, heard back there, you know, Carlos back there, is that the intention of the, of the T E, is that their desire?
We're, we're willing to give you a signed letter that, you know, doesn't guarantee a trade, because the state's got our.
Yes.
But we're willing to give you a signed letter that will use best efforts to get that accomplished.
Yep, great, we appreciate that. So with all that, I think, you know, we're, the roads are, the roads are going back up towards a, towards a resolution of this. If there's anyone else in the audience that'd like to make any comments, let's see if Mr. Webster's there, representing Hawks Hill. Just read back there, if there's any, if you guys have anything, anything to add?
I didn't pick up if Brian included in the vacation, if he wrote fifty-four.
So I may not have been clear there, for the public and for everybody else. We're looking at all the two petitions, which covers six, all of six J M. And the portions of road fifty-four, really from the state highway there, six J M, across the state land, across Hawks Hill, all the way to six M S. And then all of fifty-four B. So it basically, everything in there would be. We've got a little bit of a separate track, it's a little bit complicated to describe, but all of the public roadies, that's, there are some of those along Castle Rock Road that don't necessarily. Follow in with road fifty-four. And all of those will have to catch up. I think we're, we're willing to do that. And I think we made it so far in that process, we had just got missed in the original discussion. Don't confuse that part of it. So basically, the, the objective would be that all of the public road easements, county roads of record from six J M to state highway. All the way to county road six M S will all be.
That's a good, this is a point of clarification. So where we are right now today, we have an agreement with Hawks Hill that says they will withdraw their damages. And which has not been done yet. So really, the only something we have right now is official notification that those claims for damages have been withdrawn. From Mr. Bustos, Bustos, Hawks Hill, and the Irrigation District. That's the only something we have. If we could get the letter from T E, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend that we. You set a time period when you want those letters from Hawks Hill.
We would like, we would like, we'd like to act on this on September twenty-first. Anything else on that? Really nice to see this resolved.
Well, I would, I would, I would want to get it done today. I truly would.
I, I remember telling them that I wanted to get it done when I was chairman. And I am, I am chairman, of course, it was when I was chairman several years ago that I wanted.
I just wanted to get it done in my lifetime.
We appreciate everyone stopping by and, and we certainly hope to be able to put this bet on the twenty-first of September.
The twenty, wake up. Remember.
Monday the twentieth. So we need it. Yeah, we'll have to. We're gonna have, alright, we'll, we'll have to clean that up. Alright. Twentieth, twentieth, we've had to move our, our twenty-first meeting to the twentieth. And I failed to pick up on that, so we'll have to. Okay. Anyone else? Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Where you popping in, come to town? I'm sure.
Oh. Right here? Wow, moving right along, are we gonna be waiting on Greg?
Greg is here.
That's right. Well, we're gonna, I mean, this might be a fairly big discussion, so. Wait till a little closer to the. We might have some other. Yeah, we need to, we actually, we do need to, that's our time, change, change that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to change my motion on the highlighted subdivision to break eight-five to September one.
Nine forty-five?
Nine forty-five.
Moving to seconded? Further discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Please notify everybody.
Yes.
Were you here for the subdivision discussion?
No.
Oh. Gotcha. Try to take it.
Stay deep, bud.
We'll go with that one.
There you go.
So, busy? No, it's. Down moved to. She just went a row, she went a row. Ready? Wait. Wait, wait. And then this early is, I'm getting, I'm taking care of it. I would feel. And what are those coming around? I'd say when six J M's finally, we get permission from T E to have a celebratory drink on the bridge. What's your last name, my apologies?
It's Buckholz.
Do you know how to spell it?
I just didn't hear it the first time.
That's right.
I don't know if anybody else discovered, maybe we notified I reserve that our water killed this field.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's one thing, I know there's times for subject change, but it's one thing to budget by five minutes. I don't wanna miss, I don't wanna have anyone, it might be an interested party. And so. You didn't have anything else to do, though?
You had someone really clear and concise that staff.
Like, yeah, we're gonna send him more often.
He would love that. Sound was great.
I think the sound was.
I heard they almost, kept all that at sale.
Yeah, yeah. It really is impressive, all the business, year in, year out, was it two-hundred-and-forty, I forget how many lots. My dollars towards the last, the bids were piled, which was, you know.
The numbers just dropped down a little bit about halfway through, they're not out of bid or something.
Yeah.
But it was.
I can think of that after here, but it's good scroll.
Six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars.
That's the addition. Well, they did unlike.
Enough the last two years.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
It helps.
People that can't break away.
Especially with ninety degrees.
That allows grandparents to play.
Exactly, exactly. Those are some of the funnest, you get a grandma on the other side of the family, the bids back and forth, you get. So you give one, four, five thousand dollar rabbits.
Did you see that bid from down south? He has some huge medical issues, but he had a thing that he was putting through sale. Leaked out about the medical issues, but by the time he got down here, it had just gone thirty thousand. I mean.
Yeah.
Also had the family in that format.
Pretty deep. You're waiting for me to see it. And he crawled out.
Nice guy.
Yeah, and there was Kevin Cooper, for sure.
Obviously, there's another one.
Yeah.
Just read the email, right, and I think the bridge is right place. On, on right slip plus hard.
Oh, we have to two road bridge places, yes. I think so. And we have all the stuff, and the big seller. And I thought we would take our case storage areas.
And both in the locker.
Yeah. How did you want those?
It's cool. Jake Clark's. Yeah, I want to say, is it E of Albert or Two?
I think it does the stuff with Jake.
It does, it does, okay.
I don't know if it's on it or not, but it's like that.
Yeah. The different ones that do the livestock sales. Do your livestock sales. They do a good job, they go out and they sell.
Did you, did your daughter do the ultrasound? She hasn't been ultrasound this year.
She did.
Did she?
She's not really good.
Good. That was quite the addition. We. Probably the guy I've, well, let's see, but he studied at Otten County for years, but they ultrasound the animals for quality of meat. And then it was pretty cool.
It was.
We did, we did beef, sheep. Yeah.
That was pretty deep, the report that gave back to it shows them. Cuts and grains and barbed, leaving how much fat. And my daughter was like third event.
Market.
Yeah.
And for a lot, they actually allowed, announced the first and second, announced the first and second place. It's kind of taken the place of the harvest contest, because that's so tough to do anymore. But they're using that, so they announced the first and second off the beach. At the end of the beef show, at the end of the beef show, so if you pay attention, you know.
Oh, that's.
Which would cross.
You know, actually, Ali's buyer, that's bought because he would, they had posted in the board that. He, he missed the top five of that.
Size of. Rebi.
Yeah, size of.
Someone's a rebi.
Um, I don't remember. I don't remember the details. I can tell you the breakout. Got you, spread the animal fat, yeah. Yeah, the size.
Well, he did a great job of talking to the kids as he did it about where they measure and why they measure. What your proportions, more educational reporting sessions.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see what they did it, but I, I got a copy of the report, the report's pretty detailed. Surprised that they could do that kind of stuff.
And it takes a fast, like, thirty seconds on me.
Yeah, they're, they've had EPDs around for three years, but they're a lot of good work scientifically.
I think for this year, a lot of people didn't really know what it was, what it was for, you know?
Most of them thought we were talking to see if they're correct. So it's like, that's the only place they'd ever heard ultrasound.
Yeah.
So we had to explain a lot, get the parents what we were doing.
I figured it out, but it didn't catch my eye with the ultrasound.
Now, most of your higher end old sales. And they'll usually specify. EPDs come by ultrasound or.
I didn't know that, cool.
Pass Trapper and staff, and did you need a report for a tree damage plant?
Not that I've heard.
If not, how would, how does that work?
They don't do that because there's no trees in part.
That's the only tree in part.
If the police know, why wouldn't you guys be contacted?
They usually do, if it's something that's blocking the road or in the way, they'll call us. They'll call on the foreman. If they may have a big call, boy, I just, we've been so tied up. I may not.
Who would have responded? Just road and bridge.
Road and bridge. So, so we, we probably get notice and it'd be like a service request. So we go.
I didn't know it got called in until this morning, listening to Scott on the radio and the police blotter stuff. There was a tree that blew out, and I would have seen it, saw it come out. So I was worried, you know, somebody could have put a tree.
Uh, usually it'd be like they call Chip, and then Chip and somebody that's down there to check it out.
I love that. Sound like he's with the community. Freaky divorce. Which I had over, every time I've recorded. I've had the same set about me.
So, Lloyd, there's still no longer an issue on the tree.
I, I mean, it's still in the area, that's bad. It's also laying across the fence, let's see what comes next. Your fence.
Your, your tree was.
Depends, possession now is more on you. More on you. You were going by roots.
Well, it's hard to hit with your property on public ground, you were responsible for it. Uh, years ago, when I was a kid. Now I was actually wrecking my cars. Run side my concrete light pole, broke it last time. And I ended up having a surprise never like born.
Should get a bit of girlfriend.
One you work.
I, uh. I remember years ago, you know, I got over served and, uh. I. I dozed off, I dozed off and, and hit a guardrail. They were gonna come after me for the guardrail, I think. Gale Beers figured out I didn't have them, anybody at all, that's just. That was where, that was the cunning guy in Brangler.
We get that quite a bit, we get people in guardrails, give rest. I know when I did this line, that concrete light pole, I wanted to put those plastic on there.
The county could have drove all the way up to park and put a couple. Alright, we're, we're, we're close enough, we're gonna. Talk about our. City of Cody, Park County Sewer Lagoon Agreement. You wanna fire off where we're at?
I will do my best. So, as most everybody knows, we, we've been kind of longer even. We keep a track of our sewer lagoon situation for Park County, for the septic haulers, for rural Park County. It's located on Rocky Road. Uh, we've been, you know, watching with increased demand and watch those rates go up. And we're now pushing two and a half billion gallons a year that were taken there. And that, that facility was designed in the seventies and eighties. It's kind of long past its useful life, but we're. Capacity wise, so we've been, over the last, I'm gonna say last year, looking at options, short term and long, long term, and what we could do to. To, uh. Hopefully handle the current and projected demand. Uh, we contracted with Engineering Associates that did a scoping report for us to look at. Uh, our capacity, where we're headed, the demand, and what would be done at our site. Short term, maybe looking at alternate sites, and then whether or not, uh, there would be possibilities of maybe combining with. City Cody was one option, just because they have their wastewater facilities not far away. To the east of, of our, our facility. So they prepared a report, I think most of you can see that. Uh, we've had some work sessions about it. That brought back the fourth communication with City of Cody. Uh, the recommendation that came out of the, uh. Out of the report from Engineering Associates was to explore the option of maybe combining. Facilities with the City of Cody. Maybe trying to utilize funds, ARP funds, or something through the county. They help finance that. Uh, they also looked at rates, EPA did, in terms of where we're charging now compared to what we should for O A O. And it's looking at a, or long range facility and trying to be able to recover those costs. So all that, so that's scoping report as well. Uh, I do, we did have a, I guess, the introductory meeting with the city was last Tuesday, I think it was. Last Tuesday, Mr. Tilden was president at that. And, uh, I think what came out of that meeting was not a. Uh, not anything official or no official action, but, uh, I guess an expression of willingness on the part of the City of Cody that. That they're willing to maybe. Continue the discussion and look forward to. To just, to continue the discussion of possibly, uh. Exploring. City Cody and the county working together on some sort of joint, so. I think that's where we pretty much left off, and we've chatted about, you know, maybe the next steps. I know there's this critical deadline with BUDY, how that falls in. I know the city's probably a year out for whether or not thinking too much because of their, they've got a pretty new system too, and. To track you. You know, basically, the efficiency and how their system operates. It's not as easy as just providing flows because the, the input that we'd be bringing in. Or that our, that the customers would be bringing in is just much more concentrated potent material. You know, not near the volumes that they have, but, but it would, it would definitely impact their capacity. They'd have to be sure to not upset their wastewater process, so it would take expansion of their facility to be able to accommodate, receive that type of. Of waste. So, I guess at this point, we're just, what, we had actually formally got together as commissioners in this setting. Uh, since we did it at City Cody, bringing to your attention too, that it's a, it's a problem that's not going away. And, uh. You know, I think there is an opportunity to try to address this issue. You know, there's the economic side of it that costs a lot of money, but then you gotta look at the town, Cody, and the community, and. Development around that area, and does it make sense for us to have two wastewater treatment facilities on the fringes? You know, City, City of Cody. So looking forward, has there been a way to do it? That's, that's, I guess, the discussion. Then where do we go from here?
I'll start, I guess. Discuss. My question, I guess, and I know you can't, the, the city here at Cody, you can't speak for council and decisions that haven't been made yet. Do you feel the, the City of Cody is willing to put some skin in the game? Uh, meaning use part of your ARPS funds to help partner in that correction with the county, or?
That has not been the nature of the discussion thus far. Uh, the challenge we have there is that the city invested capital in a, in a. Facility of this nature, we would need to recoup that capital through the user rates that are ultimately charged to those users. So, if we put money in a, in that manner, those rates are gonna go up. Uh, uh, I think what Brian and I would agree is the benefit of this current funding stream. Um, and, and recognizing that the county would be putting in that money, those rates would, with that investment, the rates. To those users would be lower in, in process because we are.
Our money, they were putting in his ARPS money, I mean.
Yeah, so we, we've identified other priorities right now for our, our funding, so. Right now, it is not on the list that's been discussed with the council. This specific project is not on that list.
Because I have a question for one of the haulers. What would happen if the county didn't have these lagoons? Where would you have to go and what kind of cost would they be with your?
Uh, right now, the, all the closest place probably to take it is Fort. That's the only place I'd go.
And they're at sixty dollars or something.
Sixty or sixty-five.
So you don't have the haul cost plus the sixty dollars.
We wouldn't have to.
Well, I, I would, I know you do mind, so. I realize where that cost is gonna come from, but, yeah, just wondering what the options were, but that's about the only option for the area is.
Yes. Keep in mind that quantity, two and a half billion gallons, that's a lot to be trucking somewhere.
Mr. Regal. Um, as far as the existing facility, um, we don't expand or go deeper because of existing wells. How far out can we go and how deeper can we go on the existing lagoon to maybe give us another?
That's much deeper, we've discussed, one of the options was build their third lagoon. And then also, one of the options we looked at was looking at a. Under, underground injection control system, so it's basically like a commercial or a large scale reach build. You know, like do that like a subject system. That moves us into a permitting situation, because right now, we're, uh, basically, I don't say off the radar, but we're a steel or discharge facility. Once you start injecting, because we're in the operation system, once you start injecting. Uh, it gets into groundwater, water, your wells, permit appliance, it kind of, you gave, and that is an option that we'll consider.
So is it D Q permit?
Well, yes.
D Q permit. Oh, so is this a long, I know D Q sometimes takes some time, would this be a long permitting process?
It seems like everything takes a long time. But I would think, you know, especially the nature of where we're at, you know, a year, you know, a couple of years that we could, we could be up there. We've got about three, four years that we think, that we just moved into the north lagoon. Once that starts getting full, and we get to where we're having to try to balance the two ponds, that's where we get into trouble. This last night before we moved to the north pond, we were already past our freeboard, which is about you keep spilling over your banks. We were pushing within inches of going over our, our base, so. We pushed on it.
Good, real quick. I had Brian ask twice along, along with what you're talking about, it's my understanding too, if you become a discharge facility. You have to have someone on staff that has license and expertise in order to do that.
That's my understanding, it's right.
That's generally. That helps actually, but. Is that a full-time staff member or just somebody who will do it when there's a discharge, or is it a constant discharge, or how does that work?
We'd have to explore that further, Bill, if you'd like.
In general, a permitted discharge requires monthly monitoring, so for, as an example, for the City of Cody. Wastewater Treatment Facility, we have to fill out a monthly discharge permit, submit that to D E Q and EPA, so. I'm confident that would be the type of. Documentation and reporting requirement that your facility would have. In addition, we need a certified operator on staff to be the operator. What they designate as the operator in responsible charge, individual that's certified through the, um, D E Q. Process and, and also has continuing education to maintain that certification, so that would be an additional staff member on.
So it could be a full-time staff member.
It, it may not be full-time.
You just have to certify.
Yeah. But in, but in general, in order to have those certifications, it is. The nature of a full-timer, at least, I would say fifty percent.
The expansion of it, of the lagoon wasn't one of the five that was put on here. Well, as far as the numbers are concerned, the, the cost, it sounds like.
Uh, it actually was, I, I, it may be, I apologize, I didn't break that, with, there was, there's one that, that discussed the underground injection control. And it was like a dosy station with a pump system. And we're working all the, uh, that would have been one of the shorter term options, I think, we have to do is discuss. But, yeah, there, there could be poor capacity through some. Capital improvements at that site, so that, that is a possibility.
One other thing, just for information sake, for those that are listening to this conversation. Some of the study stuff was, was Band-Aid fixes of just under two hundred thousand dollars. Good things are starting to get to two point one million. A little over three million, so it's. It's not to be taken lightly, if whatever we decide to do, there's a lot of money.
So, I have a question for private, because it's probably more opinion than, it may not be answer, but. Would privates, do you believe the private sector in your, in your business would, uh, if the facilities.
Would privates, do you believe the private sector in their, in your business would, if the facilities went away or were very limited? If you had the town government, would you think the private sector would step up and build something that sells? I mean, they, they, they are talking probably a couple of million, they might be able to do a little cheaper than the company can. But you're still gonna have a couple of million invested in some type of storage facility or a transfer station. Is that a possibility with, with Peel or any of your competitors, or do you see that as a possibility?
Either you're, you are being recorded.
I, I understand that, you know, just, just wrapped up my head. I mean, obviously it's gonna be extreme cost, but if we have to go a world.
You would rather just pass buck on or?
But yeah, it's gonna.
I know, it's tough to pencil. I've been trying to figure it out here too, because gross, we're even. At current prices right now, we're only talking a hundred and fifty thousand a year income. It's kind of hard to build a two and a half million dollar facility and pay for it on top of an operator to run it.
Well, that'd be the same thing if we built one too.
Right.
Unless we have the fat system just like you.
So I look at it as we're faced with Band-Aid in our own one for a little bit more product to extend the life. Or jump in full force. Second part of your question, and that is. On what Peel haulers, do you have any idea percentage lies, how much value is septic versus servicing campground for parts?
I do not. It's, it's mostly septic. I mean, the biggest, the biggest campground that we service on a consistent basis is the trout ranch.
Is what?
The trout ranch.
You don't do a forest service?
Yes, yes. Uh, right now Iris has the forest service contract. We do the state park.
And where I'm going with this, I guess, and I, I may take off the city of Cody here. But you know, you may see that we're not, you think it's a county issue, but Cody is tourism. And without these campgrounds in our areas that are being serviced. You wouldn't have so much tourist. And so to say you don't really have a. Anything to gain, the city of Cody really does, so.
All right, I don't mean to imply, sir, that we don't have anything to gain. I'm just simply stating that if we invest capital. We need to recoup that capital through the rates. So ultimately, those rates.
Unless you re-prioritize, re-prioritize your arcs. But the discussion, I, what I, I mean, I, I, I don't know where we go from here, but I do know that. We, it seems like we have time, you know, we just have to have it allocated. I would decide that, that that day is gonna be coming forth very quickly. If we don't have a definite answer, can't get one from the city for a year. I don't know that that's the direction I'd like to go.
Mr. Chairman, it may sound like we have time to make the decision before twenty-four. But then getting it done in a two-year period, because the money has to be spent by twenty-six, is going to be extremely tight if the permitting takes a year. So we're kind of in a catch here is to make that decision.
And Mr. Chairman, that's where I'm going with this. I don't want to wait there to find out whether or not this city of Cody. Get pencil and put their facility.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the meeting we had the other night with the city, you know. We didn't talk about who's gonna pay for what, but what we're looking for was basically a consensus on the concept of. Forming a partnership with the city. And me, that's the logical way to go right now. But our options right now is partner with the city, let them take it over. Figure out what's going forward, let them take it over. We either feed out what we have, or they're private haulers, or some somewhere else. Or we go in and sue. My recommendation, I guess, going forward, is at least get, get to the point where we know it's gonna cost. What it's gonna cost, I mean, we're looking now at two point nine million dollars, that's just a number that they hold out of thin air. But at least like to get to the point where we figure out what it's gonna cost, and then we can negotiate with the city and say. You guys wanna raise your rates a little bit, put some skin in the game or not, then we have to.
So we won't, we'll go back for another year.
No, we can wait, we can get a handle on what you're gonna call it.
Yeah, we can. And, and I, I say that, I mean, there's been more than, I said a shot in the dark, but we. I think, but I think the price has probably added a little bit on the high side, but. I think there's more that could be done to apply to those members, but I, I think they're in the ballpark of what we're, what we're looking at. Phelps done this in another place, another seemed to somewhere else, and even engineering associates has built very similar. Uh, facilities other places. So they've got an idea. Construction costs are all over the place right now, so it's hard to put a pencil on that.
Well, and at some point relatively very near picture, we're gonna have to make a decision. Because we, as Dossie pointed out, we don't have a lot of time. So, okay, we've got till twenty twenty-three. That's not a lot of time.
Another thing I think we need to decide is, this is of course, I think myself, I have a septic system that has to be pumped, and I know what's gonna happen if we raise our rates. I know what'll happen to my fee, but um. Obviously, when we're talking that we charge twenty to twenty-five dollars a load and market rate is forty to sixty dollars per thousand. Um, we're not bringing in enough money to even cover what we're having to be down now as far as monitoring and. Taking care of things. So I think in the, in the short term time, we need to look at at least a little bit of a raise in the fee. Of what we are doing right now.
So that moves us into our next segment.
Uh, back for the private haulers. Probably the biggest hurdle in any of that other than the cost would be where we're. The chances of getting something approved to be built somewhere in Burntown. I can't think of anybody who would want it in our backyard. I mean, that, that would be the biggest problem I can see. The other thing, just as citizens thinking about this, is has there been any discussion with cities, how? About having two sites? They can not let, not have to go into max and split.
Well, I guess where I come down on it, that is, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if the county's gonna invest a bunch of money in. And it's mine, I might be the lone voice that says, we keep it as a county facility. If, if we're not gonna invest in it, the, and, and approve the facility or build it, I mean, not approve. If we're not gonna build a new facility, I say we invest enough to. Get our current facility through for. An indeterminate amount of time, but that also gives the, the private sector a heads up that it might be close. And, and we just, you know, see what, see how, how things shake out then. But that's, if we're gonna build, if we're gonna build a new facility, we're talking two point nine million dollars, that's not all our money. You know, we can't commit, I don't, I don't feel comfortable committing that much of that when we have other projects that could use that, use that funding. If not worse than, than this facility. So, that being said, I, I would, if we decide to build a facility, it's gonna. Be my desire to maintain a county facility.
Yeah, this probably give you a trouble for saves. No, I, I guess when we first started looking at this, how, back to Steve Page's days, who've been looking at it for a long time. Just from a pure, if you throw the jurisdiction out the window. Just looking at two wastewater facilities that close together, you know, throw county out, throw city out. But what makes the best sense for the public to do it? And, and having a compliant facility, I think, I don't feel that I agree that that makes the most sense. And, you know, when we talk skin in the game, you know, the city would have to um basically administer that. You know, bill and charge customers, recruit those fees. Um, you know, all of that part that they would have to expand their capacity, it takes some of their capacity to adjust wastewater systems. So, you know, it's something that they wouldn't have to do. Uh, I thought they would have skin in the game. It gets the county out of that business. Even the wastewater business, which I would love, you know, we've got plenty of other stuff to do. And, you know, it's an arcade old facility, you ought to keep putting, investing, putting more lipstick on that page. So I just thought it out there, really think about, there's county, there's county and city, but what's best for the public and the whole. We're down to invest a little bit now, the county would be out of this business to be. From a taxpayer's perspective, it sounds like.
I think it missed a lot of that to be out of it.
If I could too, you know, looking down the road, the way the volumes have then have increased in the last five to six years. I mean, when I was first, we didn't charge anything, we're just, you know, we, we didn't think about it down there.
Correct.
And the way the volume has increased, I think, looking down the road, you have to consider that. What type of, if the county decides to stand, but what type of facility are we gonna have to have? And who are we gonna have to hire to staff it?
And I, I draw a lot of parallels to landfill business. It's very similar, you know, when you, you start out the landfill business, we were. You know, and, and look where that's gone, you know, and so if we're gonna be in that business, we gotta do it right, we gotta design it right, operate it right. And have it constructed right, so.
You know, I mean, or, obviously a need in the county, no question about that. I don't even know when it started and how the county ever got it to begin with. But obviously, they were filling it because of the public, and that need has gotten more as time has gone along. And I mean, I'm, I'm with Brian, I think we need to get out of, I don't think we need to be in a, I really don't.
I think, just one day, uh, just a couple of things to consider too, is that. You know, really truly, we would need twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week access to whatever happens to. Which is what we got now. Because they have emergency stuff on weekends, holidays, you know, middle of the night, I mean, it's. That potential would be in there too, so if we're talking anything with the city. Just that thought to keep in mind that if it's a car or whatever to get you access facility, that would be. That would be preferred by, by far.
Well, that moves us into the next part of our discussion, and that's adjusting the rates that we're currently charging. We've got a hauler's right here, so we. I did reach out to, I think I've hit the whole of haulers that we worked with, at, at least through, through email. And, you know, tried to get some feedback, and I think several of them are here today to discuss that. Uh, from the engineering associates report they put together. Uh, they took a look at the market, took a look at our costs, cost of service. And then projected costs moving forward on what it would take, what it implies. Uh, you know, and we were pushing, you know, sixty bucks a, a thousand gallons. To be able to cover what we're at, where, where we're at and where we're going from an operational perspective. And then, you know, any additional costs just depends on what happens with funding, you know, if, if it's. Our buddy where there's no debt service on it, you know, now you're trying to recover that, that could be reflected in the, in the fees from there. Uh, it, it's pretty easily sixty, sixty-five bucks a gallon. Right now, we're at about twenty. So we're pretty woefully undercharging right now. I think there's a report where there's twenty-five, I think it's actually twenty, or ten thousand. Approximately two thousand is what it says.
Twenty dollars for twenty, they had twenty-five slash per load for approximately two thousand gallons. And then it says the market rate varies from forty to sixty per one thousand.
What are your thoughts?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my thoughts were the same as they were three months ago when I brought the subject out, shocked them. At least paying, but even if they do. And I agree, we, we do definitely need to give the haulers a little time to, to make their adjustment. And would you feel that if we, if these rates were to come into effect, uh, whatever we choose they may be, say sixty, sixty-five per thousand? You have enough time to make your adjustments for your, I know you have contracts, but uh. We can discuss any of those that you are locked into beyond January of uh twenty twenty-two?
Right, they, they all come to, might say, all different types of years. I mean, it's.
I understand.
It, it, I'd have to go back and look at everything we got to see if there's a ability in there to. I mean, you can always drop a contract, I mean, that's always.
Well, and that's, I guess, where I'm trying to, to get the, a motion worth it to where it also protects them from that, you know, absolutely lose money. But of an increase of rates, I would move to make a motion to increase uh to sixty-five dollars per thousand. Effective the end of this year, if you can show us contracts that you are locked into. We can extend the. Yes. We can extend that, the current rate to the expiration of your current contract.
So let me just try to quantify that motion. You're making a motion that we increase the rates to sixty-five. Dollars per thousand back to January one, twenty twenty-two, but allowing us to. To extend the current rates to the end of any contracts that haulers have.
Correct.
I'm having a hard time with that motion, well, the motion's been made, so.
And that's been made, I blacked it.
Okay, go here a second.
Take that part out.
Go here a second. We got a motion, okay. Alright, so the motion died for lack of a second. Now, Mr. Sheldman.
You know, I, I don't know whether in a formal motion we can protect them with a contractual obligation. I would presume your contract has some kind of wiggle room in, in the event that rates go up. So I don't, I don't really think that part makes a difference, that's the only reason why I did. Anyway, I'll make a motion to increase the rate to sixty-five dollars per thousand, effective January one, twenty twenty-two. I'm second to that.
Moving on, no further discussion.
I, I will support, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm concerned that they, you say they have their contracts. Come due with different kinds of year, not just look at their businesses and being obligated into a contract, but. They can't, that they, I don't want to prove this one.
What's your thoughts on that, Gary?
Is, is it possible with the county to prevent to come back and negotiate?
It always is, and that, that's what I was gonna say, in the event that they have. Their forest service contractor, whoever, and they're on a fiscal year basis, and they are absolutely locked in one hundred percent, I certainly will.
Okay, further discussion. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Call those, call it, Jared, Jared.
If I could, about the first part, where, how are we gonna proceed with making a decision on what we're gonna do with this stuff? I mean, it's hard to raise, we're gonna be in the business for the next three, four years, damn.
Well, I like, I guess I'd like, if, if, if there is such a thing as harder figures on, on a new facility. If not, we, we just go with the number of three million and we'll figure out here pretty quick what, what we're gonna do. Yeah, I, we could put our heads together, I think, instead of. Two point nine, three billion, maybe we could dial it a little higher than that.
So if I may, for some additional clarification, uh, when I mentioned in the past this period of one year. Before we can make any definitive commitments. That is simply based on a year of operation of our new plant. Uh, that plant is to be commissioned and in service. And in city use uh this fall. We're still working through some challenges of scheduling, and that may not take place till next spring. But the, the, that second phase project, this new process will be done this fall or at the latest next spring. And then the, the data that we need for that one year period is, is the operation of the plant. All that said, we can make very good estimates based on the design values of that plant. And EA has been our consultant throughout the design of that, that process and that new plant. Uh, EA is also working with Brian on, on your facility. So there's a lot of opportunity there to have them be looking at both of those and, and start making our estimates of. What amount of our capacity will be or could be utilized by this septic receiving. And what that growth scenario looks like for ultimately growth in the city and growth in the septic receiving. That will trigger our next phases of improvements, uh, probably in a fifteen to twenty year timeframe. But we, we can make some very well-informed and educated decisions, Brian and I work together. Back to both you and the city council, and then the definitive, you know, if everything looks favorable. We'll still need that definitive data from the actual operation, that first year of operation of the plant. Uh, so, so I, I feel confident that we can move forward, start to gather this data. And make some informed decisions based on the design values of our new plant. And then start to refine those cost estimates to further uh drill in on what, what exact facilities would be necessary. And what those uh more, uh, more appropriate costs are, okay?
Yeah, soon we can, as soon as we can start getting some more, more of our, start pushing towards a final decision. And so the sooner the better. We will work on it. Okay?
If I may also.
I, no, just a second. We were running short on time. I'm sure he didn't have something to say. Okay, the only other thing that, that we would like to request is that, number one, that's the, the county or whatever, uh, notify, you know, let everybody know the prices are going up. And if we could get a letter from the county with the letterhead that we could send to our customers. So, yeah, so we're not the bad guys for this whole thing. And we will, we'll get, we'll generate that, we'll generate that letter and get it out to you guys. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Ongoing discussion. Next up, we've got Park County Sheriff Scott Stewart to approve the vendor for the county sheriff's vehicle and the home security vehicle. Be a full, but home security vehicle. Thanks, both. I'm not sure.
So you're still working?
Yeah, we're, we're still working. Hey, we've got Park County Sheriff, we're looking at vehicles, our bids on vehicles for the sheriff's department and home security. What do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, that's who he's one first home security truck. That budget was really good. It's a, have a crew that's through that other, that original official by the, because that cares money. So that way you guys allotted him, uh, fifty-five thousand to that vehicle. And that is for a one ton border crew cab. Uh, so Danny Manos came in at forty-four thousand, seven forty for Chevy Silverado twenty or thirty-five hundred four by four people. Uh, the nearest competitor was Dodge, which was a difference of eleven thousand, three thirty-five. My recommendation would be to accept that, uh, Danny Manuel for forty-four, seven forty.
Hey.
Moving on, it's a little more difficult, but I'll try to be quick on it. There's always budget happening.
If you would, if you would like to.
Okay, I'll take a moment to go with the bid from Danny Manuel.
Second.
Moving second to further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No, no worries, sir. Um, so on the trucks, we have a budget of eighty-eight thousand. So that was four to four. Uh, twenty, twenty-two halftime, twelve red, two caps. Fremont come in, the lowest at, uh, the Dodge Ram at seventy-one, five twenty. And that was with the trade end of the four bids, so seventy-one, five twenty for the four pickups. Uh, the nearest was Dave Reynolds with the Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred. The difference of forty-eight, forty. So it's very close. So I looked into the warranties as well. Uh, warranties on the pickup are the same for the three-year, thirty-six thousand. And, and to be clear, there was also a bid for the Ford's there, which was needed in the ballpark, we got, we got. So between the Chevy and the Dodge, uh, same three-year, thirty-six thousand bumper to bumper. But for the Dodge is a five-year, sixty-one powertrain warranty. So basically, uh, five years. It was five years, fifty thousand miles. That's a little five year, fifty thousand powertrain, I believe. Uh, the Chevy went the same again, three, thirty-six, but it's a year, uh, five years powertrain, a hundred thousand miles. So, um, I mean, it's very close what you look at there. Where's the trade in about three years? Uh, is when we try to get rid of, so, um, and I guess in fairness, when we looked at Fremont last time, when they got beat out by a technicality of, uh, the warranty, where they specified the warranty, uh, I guess I would give that to the board in that it's forty-eight hundred, uh, forty-eight, forty, worth it for that extra? What, what more can we make out of it? Or are we looking at the three years we're trying to get? That's the only big question.
We're at you for right.
Well, I know you were. I, I guess, I guess what I would recommend in fairness, what happened before, will be helpful for the fire. I would recommend that we take the three months, the eight, the four dots, to help fairness.
All right. All right, moving second to further discussion.
I got one, one quick question. Are you ready to move it, Tom?
Yes, uh, they asked, they asked for a hundred and eighty days.
Is there any, anything, like we need to down or anything like that if we don't get, we're having a problem with our road break department, right, the legal or?
There was, yeah. There was a clause in there. All it said was basically that cap bid, uh, killer is not liable for manufactured build outs. He keeps delivering time on the eighty days from what it is.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, we're, we're about the same, but, uh, our fleet startup is actually, uh, the eighteenth. Uh, so that's where we'll start. We're probably about the same, uh, in that nature. I just would like to reiterate, as I looked at the sheriff's vehicles, you know, whatever you guys like to fly, that all your vehicles are pushing a hundred thousand miles. So that five-year, a hundred thousand mile warranty, if you break it down between four pickups, it's huge. The technicality of Fremont last go around, that is their issue of how they like to bid. But the general motors product is giving you tremendously more value in a warranty. Because each of these trucks, by the time we get them in, are gonna have a hundred thousand lot of trade-ins. That's pretty huge.
That's correct, yeah. So our, our policy says we should be able to eighty thousand. But we've just never been able to infuse enough money to catch up to that, that goal. So we might start bidding use around ninety thousand, but, you know, that's where one year just infuse a bunch of money to try to get on time, hard with having that eighty thousand. It's just, it's gonna be tough to do.
Oh, really? So for the last little bit of lifespan of the vehicle, we won't have a warranty on it?
Correct.
Okay, well, we've got, we're in discussion, both.
We're in discussion. Quick, uh, what's the difference in trading value options or, or, between, to, to, I guess?
I'm sorry, I understand, understand.
The difference within in trading value to ensure we need to offer three years?
Uh, and are they equal? I, I can't answer that because what we've been given for the most part is, is, uh, here's the trading value. We don't break it down per vehicle. So they've been, break, here's, here's the trading. And typically, I would just have to say that, um, when they used to do that, I, I think the Chevys were coming in higher in resale, uh, but we haven't seen that broken down in probably three or four years.
The reason that I don't break them down, uh, is because by the time I get these trucks in, there could be more repairs. Right now, two of the trucks have ticking in the engines. Well, that's usually an exhaust, uh, Dodge. It's the left-hand exhaust manifold, brings the back bolt. Sometimes we have to pull the engine out. Sometimes we can get it out. So that's one of the reasons why I kind of leave that open. So one is eating my lunch. I can offset a little bit.
I think, I think we've been correct with the wrong, Mr. Fuel. What you were asking is historically, which trades higher?
Yes.
I mean, six, seven, eight difference between the pickups and we're, I mean, if we're gonna get thousand dollars more traded after three years.
Okay.
Chevrolet will.
Would you have a motion on it? And the motion was accepted.
I got, I got one quick question for a lot of votes. I may, I may vote against while I'm playing.
All that says.
Was, did everyone spend the two visits forty-four hundred bucks?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forty-eight hundred dollars. So traditional forty-eight hundred dollars, our vehicles are gonna be covered on our warrant. For the entire order of, 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 of life.
Correct. Okay. Okay. So we have a motion on the table and we're still in discussion.
Do we have Dodge apparently in our fleet?
Yes.
Have we had any trouble?
Oh, sure, we have.
I mean, any more so than any other?
Uh, it's, it's unique for the different vehicles. One thing we're seeing right now is like, like Mr. Miller said, we see that, that header issue and then intake issues, some of that. We've also seen some, uh, other issues, but on the flip side, we've also seen some suspension issue with the Chevy. So where one might struggle with the other one, yeah, they're, they're kind of washed.
With that, I, I, you know, on our trucks, uh, broken bridge, we're trying, I'm, I'm trying to get away from the chief of store and shipper, uh, quality equipment, but I'm willing to go with the recommendation.
Well, let's, right now we have a motion. Right now we have a motion that we're gonna accept bid from Fremont Motor for seventy-one thousand by twenty. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No, the motion carries. We'll go with the Fremont's bid on the dollar.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, you guys.
As always, thanks.
We're, we're doing the amazing. We're just trying to.
Okay, now you were talking about this question. It sticks with me at two forty-five, so.
Yeah, but I already have to get into this. I don't, I don't think you're half where you're able.
All right. Well, next up is a continued discussion and this, this is, this was labeled as a public hearing, but the public hearing has been, course has been closed. So this is a continuous discussion on Buck Creek, the state's major subdivision preliminary flat review. And so there've been a lot of, a lot of public comment perceived on this. Uh, this is probably one of the toughest decisions as far as we have to make quite some time. Our zoning, planning and zoning director said that our Park County is at a pivotal moment and I believe she's correct. We're starting to see, uh, you know, see things change in the county and change in rapidly. Uh, was it, was COVID induced? I'm not sure. We are seeing a lot of things happen in Park County. She, uh, spoke to us this morning that at one time they had twenty-three active subdivisions, more than they've ever seen. At one time, right now, we have sixteen active subdivisions going on. So a lot of things are changing in Park County and this is, this is a major, major decision. So we've got to decide what we're gonna do moving forward. Again, we've received a lot of public comment and I see Commissioner Childman raising his hand.
Why, it's got my business. I got hold of it for discussion sake. And I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the subdivision preliminary flat review of Buck Creek. No, I can be a second. This is good.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Commissioner Mangle.
Chairman, I brought it up last time, the private property rights. First loans property and government should not be involved, but I think we do have to protect people, the, the neighborhood. I think we, we need to protect the guy downstream. And I think there's been a lot of questions on the water that is gonna be available in a subdivision this size, which left twenty-three more units of people drilling wells and going deeper and deeper and deeper. And it has to affect the neighbors. And that has to affect the, the watershed that is in that area. So while I'm for this person's personal rights of doing what they can for their own property, but affecting someone next door, I think that has to be considered. And so that's why I would like to see a better study of this, of if there's enough water available. And when we get into safety, especially if we're acting twenty-three units to a, a county that might be shut down in a lagoon, uh, I think that that has to be considered also. I think there has to be a, a better study with the water issue. Mr. Chairman.
I'll agree with everything that's said. This is one of the most difficult decisions because of private property rights. And I also agree with Commissioner Mangle and on top of, of, of that, you look at the effects of the neighbors, what they have to look at. An estimation or challenge for responsible development. And I, I think we can, we're not, whatever we decide to do is definitely gonna set a precedent that's going into, you know, the future. I lean more toward the agricultural impacts of, uh, this type of subdivision being put, spanned out in the middle of agriculture. In our regulations, in our land use plan, we don't allow commercial activity within residential areas. Agriculture is a commercial activity. We wouldn't allow a, a big farm in the middle of residential. So why are we allowing this? And so in the middle of agriculture. There are places for responsible development and the magnitude of this development within, in the middle of agriculture, uh, is, is not the direction I feel that people are trying to work in. I would feel different and I, I definitely feel strongly about private property rights. It goes with, but against a municipality, uh, it does have some pros to where it's at as far as highway access, but there's also a lot of negative to that too. And to say that this would not impact the surrounding agriculture is, is, is not right. Uh, secondly, um, it was the open brought up out earlier on, uh, look at the revenue that this is going to bring to Park County. And that is actually the opposite. There's studies and I looked at them, or one to you guys showing that, uh, rural development actually costs county its services, that it costs, it costs all research. So looking out over for the best for the county, I cannot support this under the current land included dissection. And I, I, it's a tough decision because of other ag, minor subdivisions. And every little bit takes away, uh, and every little bit impacts. Most of those I can justify because they're a quarter of a field or, or some reason or whatever. Doesn't make it right, but they, they try to protect the property rights for the overall. And that we need to look to neighboring events and I believe this will have a larger impact on the neighbor's.
To try and agree with both of the other commissioners that have spoken on this and especially as far as the private property rights go and visibility to, the land was for sale, bought the land, um, going through the process. What I don't agree with is what we have found out on the quality of the water and quantity of the water. We had a report from DEQ, but after a phone conversation with DEQ, they did not make a trip up to look at the site, which they're not required to do, but would, both they would do for a twenty-three lot situation. We've heard from neighboring landowners about water and the going to pivots versus flooding, which is also going to detract from the water supply in that area. And I don't think we know enough. I would rather see, if we were to move forward with anything like this, I would want a full hydrological study of that area of the subdivision. Or I would agree to this many wells going into that area that we would have to deal with in the future. And of course, with my past, I understand people with subdivisions and water issues. Um, one of the reasons why Western Water was founded was because of water needs out of the rural areas for people that had original wells. And those wells either went dry or the quality was bad. So I'm a little skeptical of not having enough information here to make me comfortable with twenty-three lots with wells.
Well, one of my, that, the water's, water's probably the key issue that I have concerns about this. I'm, you know, the, the water table out there, I guess if you wanna call it, is, is an artificial water table. It's, it's there a lot because of irrigation. I'm, I'm the, uh, eastern neighbor of Copperleaf. Anyone knows where that is or anything about that. It was quite contentious a long time before I was a, I was a commissioner, but I've always been their neighbor. And that was hay ground. Before that, it was just safe brush. When it was turned into hay ground, it had a, you know, there's a lot of irrigated land, it's flooded irrigated. That chunk was never put in to sprinkle. When Copperleaf was developed, they quit irrigating and there were wells that were to the north of Copperleaf that were impacted. So I believe we only got an artificial water table up there. And as we move forward with, I don't know, with, uh, vivid irrigation, we're putting less water in the ground, therefore, you know, on the sediment engineer, I'm not one, but when you start reducing the amount of water going in the ground, you're gonna produce the amount you can take out. I'm not saying it's, it's, I'm not smart enough or have enough background to say that that is going to happen, but I don't believe that it has been addressed adequately in this, in this situation.
That's true. If I could, I guess I gotta put, for staff, it's always over there. You know, and I, I realize our rules and regulations, we have to take order under. You know, and I I realize our rules and regulations, we have to take water under any consideration. But to what extent? Because in the groundwater in the state of Wyoming is primarily handled by the state. Now, in the past, we've done subdivisions when there had no drinkable water. And we basically put on the flat, you know, you may have to use a syringe, so I'm just wanting to find the extent of our response.
So I'll address this on two levels. One, I'll address it on state statute level, and state statute gives you the responsibility to approve the adequacy of quantity and quality of water. It also requires CEQ review. So you've obviously fulfilled the CEQ requirement from statute, but you're still left with the adequacy of the water yourself. And your regulations also state the same. And so you at any time can request information on the adequacy of quantity, quality of water. You can require the subdivider to identify how much water will be needed as well as an adequate source for it. And so that is not only dictated by your own rule, but it's dictated by state statute for all subdivisions that be called major. In other words, over five lots.
Well, you know, moving forward on this, I mean, I I do have concerns about the water. There's no question about that. And but as far as the agriculture part of us concerned, I would not vote in favor to deny this. For the major major subdivision. Because I'm a firm believer in private property rights. And one thing that really concerns me about this is is you're not only infringing upon somebody's private property rights, what they can and cannot do with their property, but to me, you potentially are establishing land value in the future. Saying this land will always remain, I hope. And that bothers me. Because you pointed out this morning, I've been staffed how difficult it is for farmers to make a living these days. The commodity prices are down. And you know, inflation is uprising cost. So you get someone that that can't fix it in the farming business. So let's say he wants to pass it on to the next generation. They said, Dad, I don't want anything to do with the farm. They need to have the ability to get the most money for their property, because they're moving ahead in life to do something else. And I don't think, you know, our position is not to say we favor development or are against development. Our position is make sure that development is done properly. We live in a capitalist society. And I don't think we need to be put in a position of regulating land values and telling people what they can and cannot do with the problem.
We already do. We already do. We already we already do. Do what you can and can't do.
And 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 that I do agree a hundred percent. If we didn't have zoning at all, that would be completely fine, too. But we do, and because of that, we regulate what you can and cannot do based within zones. So therefore my argument, and within those rules, it says you can't have commercial activity without a special sort of areas or something like that within residential areas. Well, this is just the flip side. So you can't have it both ways.
I'm not asking for both.
You're you're putting a small development, or larger development town basically in the middle of agriculture, which is a commercial activity.
Well, we did. We've already done three today that were in agricultural.
And and I base it my decision on the magnitude of this one versus the smaller.
To me, what difference does it make if it's a twenty acre parcel or a two hundred acre parcel?
The effect on the surrounding.
Well, I mean, I that's that's certainly your decision, Lloyd and I, you know, but I I can't agree with that. A person needs to have the ability to do what they want with their land with a reason. And when you tell someone that this land is always always gonna remain hydrological. I'm surprised that that land forage is always gonna be based on what that property will produce. Here, end of story. And I mean, how would how would how would you like it if your if your property you said, we said, okay, Lloyd, you can never sell your property for anything for agriculture. A developer came to you tomorrow and said, let's see, I'm gonna offer you twenty five thousand dollars later, feel like I'm a developer. You gonna say no?
I already have.
Excuse me, you're you're a hell of a better man than I am.
Well, so within reason. So how do we define within reason? Because as I stated before, we already are telling people there are regulations saying what you can and cannot do with your private property. And you know, I understand the private property rights. We've also been charged with making decisions for the better run future of this community, this county. And I believe that you know, what's the difference if we if we turn this into you know, five lots, take this whole thing turned into five lots. You know, is that is that within reason of what they can do, you know? Twenty three lots.
Sorry, guys.
You know what? I told someone that whoever's phone goes off, ask to buy the beer. And there's a crowded room here. But we we're another thing to consider is this is dead in the middle of Cody and Powell. And what what municipality is gonna be able to serve that? What fire department is gonna be able to serve it? You're you're putting a lot of strain on this the infrastructure we have in place right now. So but again, like I I would really love to, I I don't think it's the the place of the county to make a decision based on whether a business can stay in business or not stay in business. I know the Georgias, I went to school with the Georgias, rode the school bus with the Georgias. They've got a great operation out there. But is it, I'm I'm not gonna base my decision on whether they can remain in business. I'm sorry. I think they're they're a strong working family, and they'll figure out how to make things go forward. My big concern here is is this the right place for a development of this size, given the given the water table and the potential? And if if a hydraulic study came back and said, go for it, I'm not sure that that talking to two well drillers is is enough of a of a study on this to to move forward and say there's plenty of water. And that's my my two cents.
Or what would what would we be if if years ago when the town of Cody was down, it was all farmland? And Commissioner that part of the time said, well, we don't think we want this to take place.
We wouldn't be here. You're exactly right. You're right. And if the folks back then decided this would that this would work moving forward, and we might have some folks on down the line after us saying, what in the hell were they thinking when they stopped that? Or what in the hell were they thinking when they approved that?
If I could, the only other thing I'll say, huh?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. The only other thing I'll say, and I'll shut up, obviously, I'm and a minority against her, probably. But moving that thing forward, you know, we we've done three today already that were in agricultural areas. admittedly, you said that you justified those by saying it was the magnitude of the bell. Okay. But to me, that's been from the auditor. You're saying, okay, this is too big, but this is okay. With the same amount of farm ground, whether you divide it ten times or twenty three times or a hundred times, the same amount of park of farm ground is going away. And I still go back and say it's not our job to determine whether we're gonna allow development. It's how we're gonna allow development. We have rules and regulations that say this is how we're going to allow development at Park County. And as long as those rules and regulations are followed, the city has done, and I think it will continue to do. It's the proper thing to do. It's his right to come in and buy a piece of property. And if he's a developer and wants to develop the property and turn around and celebrate the profit, he's well within his right.
Well, I just think we need to look at the whole picture. I don't want more answers on the water, but I also think as we look at growth and I live out there, there is a corridor there that is going to get developed eventually, because that's where people are going is between the two. Is this the right thing to put twenty three lots in that parcel? I don't know that. But it is what's being asked for right now. But I think that is it's not adjacent to municipalities, but at least it's on a four lane highway corridor. It's not up on top of the bench. It is an area that people are going to be traveling back and forth. They may see more growth before too long. I just I don't know where else the growth is gonna go. Except between the two. I'm not saying pro or con, I'm just saying I I can see why this is where it is, and that is a viable place for growth between our two towns.
Well, then, you know, one of the things that's been pointed out in all of the phone calls and emails that we've all gotten is, you know, some people say, well, you know, don't so divide agriculture land, move houses outward where you don't have any irrigation or water or anything like that. But there are a lot of people that come here, and they wanna have their five or ten acres, whatever it is, and have a few or or have some cows or whatever. As far as being in a real a real lifestyle.
I think the other thing we we've looked at, though, is is I don't use, you can have Park or Crestview or Winchester. Those subdivisions all have rural water available, which when you're gonna do this kind of density, certainly help matters. I think that's the issue somewhat with me with this one is is the density and the number of wells. Whether it consists of that or the water, but those others were on farmland. You can have Park with staying ground. But it did have pot of water available, which and there weren't, from my memory, and doing the water system out there, there weren't very many complaints about that one going in. Right off the highway, pretty much adjacent to town, so we kind of had a flow out that direction for growth. We're gonna see all kinds of issues with growth. As Joy said, we have another sixteen subdivisions that we're looking at. We don't know where they are right now, planning and zoning has seen some hurt some of them, but we don't have a clue where they might be.
I got one one more coming.
One more, one more?
Yeah, one more last time. And the spirit is gone for months here. I would hate to see this denied. But I'm be willing to withdraw my motion if the consensus of the board is we go back to the developer and ask for a hydrological study.
You're well, you're willing to withdraw your motion?
If if the consensus is that the board is willing to do that, go back to developer and ask him for a hydrological.
We actually need to withdraw the motion so to get the consensus.
Okay, all right.
So are you good to go? With one second. Okay.
Now, I would I would make the motion to go back to developer and request a hydrological.
So you're requesting your motion to table?
Table it. Table this decision today. Go back to developer and ask for a hydrological.
Seven seconds. Discussion on that one. Commissioner Man.
Would the hydrological evaluation determine twenty three wells? Would it be able to say there is a half foot number for twenty three families to live there? And also for the neighbors to get their water, too?
So I think you would need to define what the hydrogeologic study would entail. You know, you want test wells and pump tests and how many, and you know, maybe you need a little time to define that. You know, I understand what you're asking, but you may need to reach out and see what and how to put study would entail, just so you're giving the developer the detail that they
Yes.
Right? Because you can't just say I want a hydrogeostudy and not define what's supposed to come out of it. So if that would be what you'd be wanting, I certainly think that that should be defined. We cannot
I'm not sure we have the information available at this moment to define what that what that's gonna be, what that entails. I mean, because you're ready, what what I can take a stab at it that we're wanting to see that that there would be adequate water to supply twenty three residential wells. The water there. Yeah. And the people not impacted. And that's that's a pretty that's a pretty big ask. It's a big ask, but it's better than sending it down the road, so.
Better than.
Better than knives. Well, some might might disagree. But, Mr. Teal.
Mr. Chairman. I think that would have been better if it would have been done earlier. And possibly you, you know, you can't have too much science as far as the water, park roads, though. The waste water system would have also have to be taken into consideration. And that, I believe, is our baby. Since we are home rule basically with DDQ, I believe that's way out of DDQ.
Yes, so we
Chapter twenty three says that we make those decisions. I'm not saying that study couldn't be further, but I would take it even farther. I mean, you're you're basically getting right into the three reasons why we approve or deny any of any of these, and that's the health, safety, welfare. And and when you get into the welfare, there is more effects from a magnitude of this subdivision and its density than just water. There's weeds. There's undeveloped lots. There's the effect of dogs running around of livestock. And and I I know you don't agree, but going back to agriculture, I mean, you're you're doing this in the heart of agriculture area that didn't have to deal with that. So you're affecting the welfare of the surrounding people other than water. So I I believe there's places for responsible development of this size. But I don't believe that this is that spot. The same as our zoning, which we don't spot zone. We've put it next to a municipality. Or if it has, like Winchester, for instance, that was also brought up, it has rural water. And also that's up against the federal. You know, there's places, I know people are coming here, we're not gonna keep them. But we can have the growth in our county in the rural areas where they are living. In municipality, the more rural areas as opposed to that's what I look at.
Good. So we've got a motion out there to table this application. Pending a hydrogeostudy that's going to address the availability of water with these twenty three lots and surrounding adjacent neighbors. And if anything else is to that one look at the session as well, but the main thing that we're asking from the developer is the hydrogeostudy.
Well, Mr. Chairman, as far as the wastewater is concerned, something that I can do, I mean, I think you're pretty much in charge of that, like, all right, okay.
They said, okay, we did, we we approve.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman. So you addressed like the travel lines for the supplement. And really, on the major subdivision, that's kind of the maybe to address that. The large parcel sizes kind of attest to that as well. But I think for me, the unknown piece of what you're all talking about is is the impacts, potential impacts to groundwater. The straight line property, things like that. And so maybe that's the aspect that we would have sort of talking about would be how could that potentially be impacted by groundwater or vice versa, if I understand what your concern is. And if you know where the groundwater surfaces, you might probably be able to answer that question, so.
Good. All right. Further discussion. One of the ones, one of the ones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's what we got. I got quiet. Well, you bring that to a
So if we have a lack of groundwater, we do this.
Well, then we have to decide.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so, yeah, Brian, the the ask of you right now is to is to bring a a hydrogeostudy, and we might even want to touch base with you and just figure out a diagram.
Yeah, I'll see if that's what Julie wants.
Okay. All right.
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good. What's happening?
Chauffeur.
Chauffeur.
You're a fine looking chauffeur, too.
Hey, I've got to get out of here real quick. I'm gonna entertain one last motion.
Second, boy, we agree on that.
Not there because there's some obstruction there.
Sorry to interrupt you real quick. Move to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. They they do.
I'm glad you I figured I was gonna lose it.